Well, good morning. Good to see everybody. Happy Friday. Why don't we get to work? Mr. Stoltz.
Hi. Good morning, everyone. To start off the day will be Sheena. She's going to talk about compensation and benefits. And I think she has a PowerPoint program. I don't know how she wants to do questions. I guess whenever you have a question, just raise your hand, and we'll discuss after she's done with her PowerPoint. So, Sheena.
All right, is that better? All right. Well, we are going to begin our discussions on the 2025 compensation. So the things that we are going to talk about today, and again, just to remind you, this is the beginning of us planning for the 2025 compensation wages. So we'll talk about what our expectations are moving forward and knowing we have a lot of discussions to go. We'll also give you some updates on the supplemental wages, things like shift pay, holiday pay, where we are with those items, because we've been talking about those for some time. Some action is being taken. I'm also going to spend some time talking about our vacancy reports. I think it's very important that you see where those vacancy levels are and look at what we've been doing with compensation and how that is kind of leveled out. And then, very briefly, I will talk about what we're doing for our 2025 benefits update, and that does include a prescription and medical RFP. But first, we would be amiss if we did not stop and say, "Happy birthday."
I think we got to sing, too.
I think we should sing.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to Lindsay.
Happy birthday to you.
Thank you all very much. Happy birthday, Lindsay. So first, I want to remind you of what compensation plans we have. We have 10 different plans, actually nine, but 10 that we're getting ready to implement. As a reminder, we have the general pay plan, the sheriff's pay plan, the DA's pay plan. Calm care has two pay plans. One is for licensed direct services, and the other is for support positions. Corrections also has two pay plans, one for the corrections workers and the other for the ISOs. EMS and fire both have step plans. And emergency communications, you have been briefed, and that will be on the agenda, to reestablish this pay plan in March of 2024. So just to recap, because there is so much movement on compensation, I even find myself asking, okay, remind me again of what we've done. So I want to recap what we have done in 2024. As of January 1st, the general pay plan, DA, calm care, corrections, all received a 3% general pay adjustment. The sheriff's pay plan received a 2% scale adjustment plus their steps, which are at 5%. But then also on January 21st, we moved that pay scale 8.7%. EMS and fire pay plans received a 2% scale adjustment plus their 3% steps. And emergency communications, again, on March 3rd, what you have been briefed on is we are proposing a 5% scale adjustment plus 1% for current staff. So a lot of movement already in 2024. But in 2025, we have long said that it doesn't stop there. We have to keep this momentum going of continuously looking at compensation and addressing it. What we have preliminarily laid out, and it matches with our pay pool, is to provide the general pay plan a 3% GPA plus a 2% scale adjustment. In red, you'll see on the sheriff's pay plan, he has spoke to you about a 2% scale adjustment in quarter three, and then a 4.65 scale adjustment plus their steps in 2025. We're proposing for the DA pay plan a 3% GPA plus a 2% scale adjustment. Same thing for calm care. And in corrections, as of right now, we are anticipating a 3% general pay adjustment. With the caveat, there is a lot going on in corrections right now. We're watching that very closely. As times gets closer and we can watch what the state is doing, we'll be coming to you, having those conversations about corrections. So that is a very soft 3% that we have up there. And then, fire and EMS, we recommend the 3% step increase. And then, for emergency communications, again, after that new implementation of the scale, another 3%. So again, this keeps those scale moving, and that's important because we want to keep those entry-level wages moving forward, and then also keeping that progression going with a 3%. Can I stop and ask if there's any questions about this proposal? And again, it's very soft. We know that this is just a starting point.
Would somebody be able to give any information on what you're referencing on corrections? What's happening on a macro level? Corrections. She mentioned that we're watching it carefully. What's going on?
We make our comparisons with the state and their corrections. And so, because their fiscal year starts in July, we watch them just a little bit differently. So just keeping our eye on that. Okay, we also talk about what is meaningful to employees, and we talk about different areas of supplemental wages. We've put these really in priority order after we have spoke with the manager and kind of felt where we need these to be. But shift pay has always risen to the top. So we have taken that initiative, and we began having meetings with departments, department heads, department directors, on what they would like to see with shift pay. And to be quite honest with you, we thought we would have more robust conversation. But really, all the departments have come together and agreed. Something needs to change, and we're really down to two different options that they would like to see. So it's moving at a lot faster pace. Right now, we're looking at the individuals who are within this timeframe that the departments have agreed upon, and we're calculating how many employees this would actually impact. Once we get that, then we'll be able to put a dollar amount to it, and we'll put it forward as a decision package in the 2025 budget. So as much as I would say we were going to keep digging through this, this is really going a lot smoother than what we anticipated it to be. And we plan to see that in the 2025 budget of increasing that shift amount up. We've also talked about weekend pay and holiday pay. We understand that it's very important that our services run on weekends, and we have employees who work on the actual holiday, in addition to bilingual pay and looking at some sort of longevity pay. The last four are on the table, but they're really put on the back burner because we know, number one, shift pay is jumping up to the top, and that we have to keep compensation going for all of the departments. So we're really focusing in on that shift pay and how that would impact those individuals working within certain timeframes. I added this in here, and I know it's on your sheet, so I'll just go ahead and put this up here. But we recently did an employee engagement survey, and we asked the question, "Do I see myself working for Sedgwick County in the next five years?" And this amount has increased up to 83%. And I think that really says something for the whole organization. Yeah, give yourself a round of applause. This is really great. For the next five years, because it means that we're communicating, we're having adequate benefits, we're having adequate compensation. Employees want to stay here. So of those surveyed, I believe it was close to 1,300 employees have this response. So this is really moving us in the right direction. Then we followed it up with, well, if no, then why? And of those, 17%, 32% said that they plan to retire. So that means that they are finishing their career with us. And then 24% of that said for better compensation, down, you know, current supervisor, and then development advancement or better work-life balance. But I'm sorry. Oh, okay. So I'm just really excited about this because when you look at our workforce saying, "I want to be here in five years," we're doing it right. We're making those moves. We also asked them, "How well has Sedgwick County addressed compensation in the past three years?" And we asked the past three years because that's when we have really started to take an aggressive tone towards compensation. And 24% said very well. 45% said somewhat well. I'm going to take that as a job well done. That almost 70% of our employees said that we are doing somewhat well or very well addressing compensation. So again, that goes back to the commission. Thank you for approving these ideas that we've had, moving forward, retaining employees, and also recruiting new employees. So I just want to point that out. We will.
Did you have a comment section so that we'd know why the people thought somewhat poorly or poorly?
So I will just tell you, this is very raw data. They're actually in the process of building our dashboard right now, so we haven't even seen all of it. But I just ask for a few highlights from the survey. But we'll allow that.
I was just wondering what we were missing for that 24%.
I don't know yet. Don't know. But we will present that to you once that dashboard is created. And then, we ask employees also one word to describe your work. And the three biggest ones up there, important, rewarding, and challenging. And I think that really highlights what our employees do. They do very important work. It's very rewarding working for the public, and it's very challenging work. So there's not a person that goes out there that has super easy days. They are really being pushed to the fullest. But when we get that dashboard made, we will share those results. We're very excited about it. So now we want to talk about really, what is our separations? What do our vacancies look like? And so we've backed this up to 2019, to pre-pandemic levels. And you'll remember in late 2020, but 2021 especially, in 2022, were very volatile years for what our employment looked like. We were rising up to employment turnover rates of 19%. And in 2023, we have dropped that down to 14%. That's lower than pre-pandemic levels. That's something else. So again, I attribute that to the organization. Departments are doing stuff to make a better work environment, better supervisory training, and of course, the compensation piece comes in there as well. So we're very, very excited to see that. So we're breaking it down a little bit further. So we have broken these personnel areas into some of the larger areas. So we have the appraisers, the row offices, small divisions, which would include IT, finance, and HR, Division of Administrative Services, public safety, public services, the district attorney, public works, and the sheriff. And again, you can just kind of see where those numbers are at, and they're trending down. That's really what we're looking for. And I'll show this better in this graph. You can see those areas. And we're not going to be at zero. We never want to be at zero because some turnover is good, right? But we want that to trend down because at our peak in 2021 and 2022, we were really struggling. Employees were really struggling. A lot of overtime, a lot of work being burned out. But the interesting thing is, when did we start putting in all of those pay plans? And that really happened in 2022. And we start off by saying, when we implement this, it'll take about six months to start catching up. And we can really see that we're starting to trend down even in 2023. So this talks about our personnel sub areas. And these are areas that have specific pay plans. So you remember when I was talking earlier about what pay plans we had? These are corrections plans, emergency communications, EMS, fire, calm care, district attorney, and sheriff. And again, I just want to point out, if you look at those numbers, they're all going down, especially from 2022 when we implemented those new pay plans. So one of the stories on corrections, we kept looking at this and saying, "It doesn't make sense to us." So we had a conversation with the department and said, "You know, really what's going on? Because it looks like those vacancy levels are going up." Well, what we found out from the department was that the number of clients being served is actually down. And so they still have those positions. And so their staffing is good to cover the shifts. It's just we're still holding those positions. Also, I would add with this is we still, or we have a dedicated recruitment person located in HR. And he has been able to attend over 70 events out in the public across the state that he is able to go and talk specifically about these departments and these openings. And having that face-to-face contact has really been beneficial. And he's actually coordinating with the departments to make sure that their needs are being met as well. So I, you know, there's a lot to this. Getting out into the community, moving that compensation, the work environment, so many factors into that. Commissioner Lopez.
Sorry, can you just go back? And you don't have to actually go back, but I'm going back. Just a couple of slides. What, it says small divisions. What's all of it?
So that would include the Division of IT, Finance, and HR.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. I don't know why my headers are not on this one. So then, next, we want to look at those vacancy rates for the general pay plan. So we have really extracted out the information on the individual pay plans. And so we look at the appraiser, the row offices, again, those small divisions, Division of Administrative Services, Public Safety, and Public Services. And again, I'm just pointing out, we see that trend going down. Public works is going up. We know that there are some areas within public works that need to be addressed. We've talked with Lynn about that. But we do see that. But overall, this trend, again, it's going down. So even when we extract those pay plans, what you did to the general pay plan by the 8% increase has been really helpful. Again, we've got to keep that momentum up and that momentum going. So really, to sum up what we've seen with vacancies, it's very good that we're moving in a downward trend of having about 14% in our vacancy rate. That's tremendous for an organization our size. But again, it's due to the support from the commission of moving those pay plans. We know that we have a starting block of what we've identified mainly with 3% in moving the scale. We also know that more things are coming, and I think that was alluded to yesterday. There's things that we just don't know what's going to happen to them. But it's a good starting point. We've got to keep that momentum. Employees are appreciative of that, and they are showing that in their retention. And again, those are going down. I believe even with our employment postings, we used to post between 100 and 150 positions. We're down to posting about 50 or 60. So I just, I can't say enough about what this has done to the organization. It takes a while to turn the ship around, and we're most certainly headed in that direction. So are there any questions before I stop compensation?
Last year, when we were going through all this, two areas that I was concerned about was public works. Today, you're showing us that one in five jobs are open. So we still have a problem there. So I'm trying to figure out what we're going to do there. And the other one that you didn't show today that I was concerned about last year was courthouse police. So those two departments, I have some serious concerns, but I don't know what my concerns are about courthouse police because I don't know where we're at.
Okay, so we can drill down into that information. We actually have that. We just didn't drill down today by department. But I can get you that information on there.
Okay, what are we doing with one in five openings in public works?
Public works, we are looking at. We know that there are certain areas that we are turning over more rapidly. We also have some ideas to assist with special things like snow removal, and Lynn and I have talked about those, so.
Okay. So when are we going to have a plan for getting better than one in five gone?
We're working on it.
Okay.
Yeah. Usually, I will say, usually when we make changes, we have to look at how that affects the organization as a whole. We've seen ripple effects with other movements that we're doing and adjusting there.
Tonya, do you have the courthouse police number?
Let's let Tonya talk about courthouse police. And Lynn, can you address public works? Of what, the fact that you have that many openings, how that's impacting operations for Commissioner?
Do you want me to go first, Tom? Okay. Commissioner, Chief Haynes just sent me an org chart just a couple of days ago. And looking at that, I think 42, or excuse me, 32 actual positions. I think we saw about seven vacancies. So some of those are part-time. One of those is an ARPA position. So that's currently where we're at with courthouse police. That answers that question. So I think we're doing better as far as vacancies, but we still have some vacancies.
Okay, does Chief have concerns this year? Because he expressed concerns last year.
He is doing better on his vacancy rate, I can tell you that. So I mean, there's still some concerns. Some of those are second and third shift positions. I think he still has some concerns. But he, overall, I think he feels that he is filling those positions. And so I think he feels a little bit better about his vacancy rate.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
I think he's in the ballpark of vacancy that a lot of other people are. But when we took the action with the sheriff's department, clearly, they heard that message. So we know we have to do some type of adjustment as we go through this budget process with that function. The question of how much and how that's going to happen, we'll flesh through. Lynn?
Thank you for your questions, Commissioner, about our vacancies. The crux of our vacancies are in our operator positions, our equipment operator positions out in the field. Traditionally, that's where we've always had difficulty. The one glaring issue we have right now is our equipment operator one, all our one positions out in the field weren't really addressed with the Evergreen study. They got left and are still at a low rate. And I know that that's going to be adjusted. That's going to be worked on. But that's where we have all our vacancies. All our one positions, except for one, are literally vacant, and we cannot get applicants for it. We couldn't last year. We couldn't this year. Whenever we think we have somebody, they don't pass a background check or something like that. And those are our positions where you don't require any experience whatsoever. High school diploma or GED and a willingness to learn and get your Class A or Class B CDL is required. We'll train them for that. We just can't get them inside the door. However, on the flip side, since we have taken on it in November with the new pay rates, we have seen a great increase in applicants as well as bringing new employees on. So we are trending in the right direction. We still are dealing with retirements and some that are just transitioning to higher-paying jobs. We're Class A, Class B CDLs. We compete with the short and long-haul truckers that make 30-plus dollars an hour to start, and we're never going to get rid of that. However, we have found kind of a niche with the late 30s, early 40s crowd that have been doing construction for a number of years. They're tired of getting laid off in the winter and doing unemployment. They got a family. And word is starting to get around that we treat them pretty decently, and our wages have gone up. And we have seen a nice influx with those applicants. And those have been some of the ones that have kind of stuck around realizing, hey, it's kind of nice to have a job during the winter and still have benefits and, you know, get things done. And that's what we've been selling ourselves on, and that's been working this winter.
Lynn, can you quantify that? It's 19.67%. How many FTEs is that?
I'm sorry.
How many people are you short? What is the number you're short, not the percentage?
We are currently, right now, in our field 30% short of the... So we are currently, that's going to put us at 24, I believe.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, to go back to Sheena's comment that we have to look at how that impacts the rest of the organization. I don't know that public works has that much impact on the rest of the organization because I don't see people moving back and forth from corrections over to public works or from calm care to public works or anywhere else that we're concerned about. Public works is kind of a unique organization. In addition, I have to worry about what is safety of our public because we put these people out on the road 24 hours straight anytime we have a snowfall or something like that. And that's a lot of stress on those individuals when we're working around the clock all winter long when we're having some problems. So I don't know that I agree that we got to look at what the impact is on the rest of the organization because I don't see public works having that much across people transferring from one to another in order to go to public works.
I just want to add in, we've talked about this a lot over the last month. I think organizationally, no organization, no government organizations ever are 100% staffed. Where's Fire at today? They're pretty close to being fully staffed.
Yeah.
But the organization, I think, should aspire to a 90% staffing. And we are not, we're better, but we're not there yet. I think the sheriff would maybe concur on 90%. But, and then anything less than 90. As you go down into where we've been historically, you know, 50 and 60%, that causes operational challenges. So I think organizationally, we should aspire to hit that 90% plus or minus a bit. And then the other thing I wanted to mention in the arena of corrections, because somebody asked about that. So it's, we have to kind of watch what the state does with their corrections staff, and they run on a fiscal that's opposed to ours. They run on a July 1, June 30 fiscal, and we're six months off. So we have to project ahead and watch what the state's doing and shore our people up during our fiscal cycle. So we'll continue to watch that on corrections to make sure we don't slip on the gains that we've made, so. I want to ask questions about our financial flexibility. So we were able to be flexible and do some things when the sheriff had an urgent situation in response to Wichita Police Department. We had a compensation contingency that was $5 million or close?
It was a little more than that, but that was all fun.
Okay, so, but we, in January, have absorbed the bulk of our compensation for that contingency fund. So if, two months from now, if we see we need to react, or in July, you know, with corrections, or we need to do some things with EMS or 911, where does that flexibility come from now in the 24 budget to do things now?
So step one is going to be looking at, Lorian and the budget team would go in and look at the department's budget. And if they have a high number of vacancies, then hopefully, there would be salary savings, budget authority available to access in order to fund any increase that we have to do. Same thing, we had, when we are talking about revenue replacement and how we want to handle that, and if we want to do any transfers at year end as we're talking about for CIP or anything, that's going to compete for those budget authority dollars, too. So that's why we continue to advocate to wait until later in the year because you're going to have a lot of competing priorities at the very same time. And Tom wants to comment, so I'll...
What is it about the forecast?
Well, and I will. So that's part one, is your budget authority. Part two, and this is the thing that we always come back to, is the forecast. Right now, what you heard Lorian talk about yesterday is the fact that we had more than $100 million of unspent budget authority last year. So it's not always about the budget authority. It's about what is the bottom line impact to the financial forecast? We already know that we're in a structural imbalance. So my concern is, when we do these things out of cycle, when you're not able to look at every other competing priority that's happening there, we're adding to the problem without figuring out the solution at the same time. And so that's the bigger concern is, we count on people to have salary savings as a part of a forecast. So it's not like just because they've got the budget authority, we plan for that spending to occur. So every time we take an action that's outside of what HR has already pushed through as a part of a compensation strategy, that's affecting your forecast. And because it's personnel, that compounds and adds to your long-term issues that we have to resolve. Does that appropriately answer your question?
It does, yeah. I just want to make sure, I want to understand the flexibility that we do have and the challenges in the 24 budget if we have to do something urgent.
Yeah, no, and I will fall back to the old CFO, Chris Cronus. He had the Cronus Corollary that he would bring out. And that is, everything can't be priority number one. So we have enough money to do anything that's a priority, but we don't have money to do everything. And so that's why we try and push departments through a process because then we can evaluate 46 departments' priorities, your priorities, community priorities at the same time. the same time.
Okay, that's very good. Thank you.
Quick, quick comment. So the, this differentiator between departments, I think, I'm just, personally, I, I feel it's okay to have different pay scales on these departments that are actually serving the 911s, the, the emergency, the weekends, that are really out there on the line, and putting themselves out there versus others. That's why, do you have a sense that when you take a department, let's say, like, 911 or Corrections, whatever, and you increase, so the trickle of other departments, do they, does everybody kind of understand that, that we're also focusing on everybody getting compensation, but some maybe deserve, or will get a little more?
I think, I think employees look at equity across the organization. From my standpoint, the feedback we hear specifically from employees is, I'm doing the same job as this person in the other department, but I don't understand why they're making, you know, $5,000 or $10,000 more. And those are the type of conversations that we have. So we, we are looking at internal equity as well. And then recognizing that there's some departments that are just, they're just truly different, right? They're truly unique in the services that they provide. And then what is the board's priorities as well? So we take all of that information, and that's how we create the pay plans and the, what our suggestions are moving forward. So it's a juggling act of priorities.
Well, over these last couple of years, we've seen a crisis at, you know, EMS, and I can't even name all the departments, but it seemed like we would address them with an impact on, on others, as you're saying. But from my perspective, I think it's important that those upfront public departments and Corrections and sheriff officers, all those, I'm okay with them having a little better recognition, compensation-wise, from my perspective. That's all. Thank you.
I know we'll be talking a lot more about compensation. This is just, just the start of it, but we have a, a long budget season to go. Next, I just wanted to give a very brief update on what we're doing with our benefit fund. This is Fund 611 for our medical and prescription. Our current vendor that we have right now is United Healthcare. We're under contract with them through the end of this year. We are currently in the process of putting out RFPs, I'll say that plural, RFPs, because we're exploring both what a medical plan would look like and a prescription plan, and they might be one of the same, but they might not. So we're in the process of doing that right now. And we are planning to have a thorough benefits workshop with the commission on May 2, because at that point, we will know more about what our plan is moving forward. We will be able to give you information on how the plan has performed so far, and then maybe a little bit more details on, on what we're planning to do in the future. But right now, I just, I want you to know that that is currently taking place, releasing the RFP. I believe it's later on today. Some of our goals for that is to, again, have affordable rates.
Just a couple of questions on that. So the RFP is for what time period? I mean, what are you talking about, next three-year plan, five-year plan? What's?
It will be a three-year plan with two one-year renewals.
Do we have options under the current contract to extend by a year, or if, if we need to?
We're on our fifth year.
Oh, boy. Okay.
So this, we have to go back out.
Well, I bring this up because, I'm not saying this is a good idea, but it's an idea. I, I, I believe on the ESS website, you can see your total compensation report, if you will, which includes a monetized value of your health insurance. If you've not seen that, I think I looked at mine, I don't know shirts for this last year, for the year before, but it was around $21,000, maybe, I don't know the exact number, but you know what I'm talking about.
Yes.
Am I, am I close? Around $21,000 roughly?
I, I don't know your plan, but yeah.
Yeah. And, and with that, again, it's just three members of my family, including myself, that receive that benefit. And on top of that, we also have, I know there's different election things you can pick to, to, you know, there's some, there's some co-pay that's done in the, in the paycheck for some of the benefits that you might elect. But there's also co-pays deductibles. When you receive benefits, there's, I believe for myself, it's $2,000, for my family, $4,000, and then there's an out-of-pocket maximum. Until you hit the out-of-pocket maximum, there's co-pays the entire time, sometimes 20 percent, or even, sometimes even higher than that. So you sort of add this up. If the employer's putting in $21,000, $22,000 a year, and the employee's putting in four to five, six, seven thousand dollars a year, which very, it very much might be those numbers, we're getting close to $30,000 between the employee and the employer. And I think that there's a lot of other companies out there, little large companies, that have other options they've created. One of those, I believe, is Textron here in town. We ought to take a look at what Textron's doing, for example. They're using, they have, if you will, an employee medical clinic, and they employ their own doctors, their own PA, their own APRN, their own PT. They provide, if you will, basic medical care for most employees that want to opt-in. I, I don't know if they do this or not. My, my, just to have a conversation, might panic somebody. Might, it would be my intent to move away from United Healthcare, potentially. I would like to see maybe have more of a traditional plan. So if someone doesn't like the offer of an employee medical clinic, which I believe would be cost zero for the employee, okay, we would have our own clinic. In fact, we should partner with Wichita, potentially. It would save both the employer a lot of money and save the employee a lot of money, provide basic care for things like, I'm sick, or I need stitches, or I need an exam, or I need whatever, well checks, things like, all kinds of things they can do. In fact, a lot of these clinics also have pharmacy built in, and the pharmacy provides basic medical, prescription support for, you know, 50 of your most popular drugs. And if you have emergency care needs, they might operate an early clinic with, a walk-in or a late clinic, which is walk-in or weekend walk-in without appointment. And then they would offer, if you will, emergency care for things like hospitalizations unplanned, things like that. So my point is this, that there's a, there's, if you add up how much money's being invested by the employer and the employee, for a number of employees that we have, and again, I'm not saying everybody would want to do this, but for those that don't want to do it, I would, I would like to see us offer them a traditional plan. And my traditional means, we would pay an X dollar towards their program. They could elect a low, you know, a, a lower-cost plan, middle-cost plan, a higher-cost plan, with different deductible co-pay options, but they're going to have to pay something potentially for those choices. We would also offer them the employee medical clinic option, which would be free, essentially. Be no cost to the employee at all. And to me, this would get us a handle back on our medical costs, which, again, right now, are completely, we're, we're so vulnerable to the market right now. We have no idea what's going to happen going forward. It is, I know, we're in an RFP right now, but we're kind of stuck in this mold of doing it the old way, because we're, we're, it's just easy enough to change. But large employers around the country, large employers in the community, are moving towards this model, and there's a reason why, because you can actually get control of your costs. So we would actually employ, employ medical providers on behalf of our employees. We would potentially partner with Wichita, just an idea, I've not talked to anybody in Wichita, just because there's another, I didn't do that, I was not able to get the math done last night, but I thought if there was a 75 percent participation rate of, of our employees and Wichita employees, how much money that would cost us, how much savings that would be. I think it's from something we ought to take a look at. So the question is, this is such a big idea, you're not going to do this between now and the end of this year. It's not going to happen. We don't have enough time. What I don't want to do is commit ourselves to another three to five years, because I think the idea is worthy, and I don't want to see us stuck, not having another option, which I think ultimately saves taxpayer money, and I think provides better care for our employees. And for those that don't like it, they have an option for a traditional plan. But, and again, by looking at what happens in the private sector, it should give us ideas on how to save taxpayer money, provide better benefits to our employees, happy, you know, happiness of employees by not having to put out that much money of their, of their own money for medical care. That's, that's almost like giving them a raise, right? So I think we need to look at this. I'd like to suggest we would ask Textron to show us what they're doing. I believe they are using PAs, APRNs, in addition to medical doctors. They have, I believe, pharmacy benefit. And again, if you need exotic drugs that are not part of the top 50, then you still get your prescriptions written by the doctors. You still go get, you know, fulfill, fulfill those like you do today. There's a lot of things you can do, but, but to leverage the most basic care by having an employee medical clinic, I think is what we ought to be looking at.
Going back, again, affordable rates, accessible care, I've talked about that, and then the coverage for services. We're also going to provide employees an opportunity this year to provide feedback on what they would like to see in the plan. We've had many things come up the past five years that have, that healthcare looks different, and maybe some services are not provided, that they would like to see coverage on, maybe not 100 percent, but something that would be covered as opposed to fully denied. So we're going to allow opportunities for our employees to give that feedback as well. We think that would be a, a great opportunity for them. And again, on May 2, we've worked that in with Lindsay and Lorian's budget schedule, so we'll be spending several hours going through what the fund looked like, and, well, it sounds like we're going to have some conversations before then as well. So are there any questions or discussions that you have for me in regards to our plans moving forward?
A real quick question. The RFP that's going to go out on healthcare, if you recall, a couple of years ago, when we had a, actually, something in works at that time, suddenly someone came in and wanted us to cancel everything, because they said they had everything great. Are all of the different possible vendors being given the opportunity to contribute, to apply for this RFP that's going out, so that we don't have someone suddenly deciding that we ought to terminate that and choose them?
Yes, yes. That list has gone through our consultant. It's also going through our purchasing department to be updated. So, yes.
Sheena, talk about, I remember that, and I, so IMA is our, our consultant on this, and their contract is not up this year.
This is a separate contract. So we are looking for our third-party administrator
Correct.
to administer the actual insurance claims, and then a pharmaceutical benefit administrator, which is our PBA.
Well, that vendor was going around everyone and coming straight to the commission, saying, hey, we're going to cancel this contract and, and go with me. And I just don't want people going around
Yeah.
all of our staff and going straight to the commission, saying, we got a better deal, let's cancel that.
Okay. I'll be back in a couple of minutes. Thank you.
Rusty, Rusty is traveling back from Little Rock today, so he's not here. But we have EMS, and we'll let, I guess, them go first, talk about community paramedicine, and then Alora's here to talk about some changes in 911.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm just going to skip to the meat of it. So you guys have a document in front of you. I would just like to kind of just overview, 10,000-foot view of what community paramedicine is, because it's, it's not really a new concept, but it's a concept that we have not engaged in for several years. But it's definitely gaining momentum in the state and across the country. So Sedgwick County EMS is still the largest provider of EMS services in the state of Kansas. We ran around 68,000 dispatch calls last year. Of those 68,000, we had 60,000 calls with actual patients. Our annual report is still forthcoming, so you guys will have all of those figures to you, hopefully sometime in the next couple of weeks, as we get some of those things finalized. Previously, Sedgwick County EMS had a community paramedic program back in 2017. It was a partnership with Ascension Via Christi, specifically to target the CHF patients in their clinic to avoid reemissions. So they gave us a grant for one FTE, and I believe a little bit of extra money for some equipment. We had one person that go, that went out and followed up with these patients with Ascension, but we, we also used it as an opportunity to address some of the high utilizers in the system. So those people that continually call us over and over and over again, to try to find a different method to care for them, other than transporting them to the hospital. That program ended in 2019, was not renewed. Obviously, you are fully aware of some of the staffing challenges that we have had in recent past, but we're happy to say that today we are 95 percent staffed. A lot of that, we owe significant thanks to, to the commission and to county management for the support of our E2P program, as well as the compensation packages that you guys have allowed us to, to bring forth. We feel that we are in a position now that we can start exploring an alternate method to delivering pre-emergency medical care in the community. So we've got that as a decision package for our budget this year. Mobile Integrated Health is patient-centered, it's patient-focused, which is part of our strategic plan. It just gives the community the ability, the availability to have healthcare at home without obviously being transported to the emergency department. We look at a broader picture of what their healthcare is. Local, I'm sorry, not local, other state EMS agencies have already started the mobile integrated health programs. They're still very new, and they look very different. So Lawrence Douglas County Fire just started one this year. Johnson County Med Act has one. KCK Fire has had one for a couple of years. They all look extremely different. So there's not a one-size-fits-all to this model, which is great for us, because that means that we can tailor it to the needs of our community. It's innovative. It's putting specialty-trained paramedics, whether that be somebody that we've, we've said goes to a specific class. There's not really, there's one class that you can, you can obtain a certification for this for, but it, it's not really like a scope that's been identified. But we would, we would be utilizing a tenured medic to kind of go out into the community and respond to some of these calls that we're receiving through 911, and then see how that program then can develop. It's the appropriate level of care. There's a large population that would benefit from this, other than being transported. So out of the 68,000 calls that we trans, or that we ran last year, 44,000 of those were actual transports, which means that we didn't transport around 30 percent of the calls that we run on. We don't force people to go to the hospital. People have that patient autonomy. There are some times that we go out and we evaluate them, and they've now decided that they don't feel like being transported. So we obviously make sure that we've given them a thorough evaluation before we leave them, and we always can return back if they do call 911 again. This program could bridge gaps in the community where healthcare is needed. We've seen a significant call volume from the Winter Homeless Shelter this year, more so than what we have in the past years. I think there's opportunities to embrace some of those programs to help alleviate some of the burden of our crews going out multiple times a day, and not necessarily transporting, but maybe, maybe working with some of the other local agencies that are volunteering their time to provide some medical care in certain, certain instances. One of the pages that you have is a cost analysis. These are just really, really high-level vague numbers. So if we were looking to, to basically stand up a, an ambulance, 12-hour ambulance, seven days a week, the left column is what that cost would be. That, that's the average miles a day, the cost per mile. We've got salaries figured into that, as well as the cost of an, an actual ambulance to add. You can see that that price tag's pretty large. And, and our goal is not to reduce services that we currently have. This is more of a, we want to add the services that we provide. So we're, we're not looking to replace a transport unit. What we're looking is to enhance what we currently have. The left-hand side is just a rough estimate of what a community paramedic would cost to stand up today. And you can see that there's a significant reduction in the amount of the vehicle cost for that individual's responses. And obviously, those, those depreciate over time. I, I wouldn't be remiss to let you know that community paramedicine is not something that we can generate revenue from, yet. I say that yet, because there are talks at the national level and at the state level with CMS and KDHE and Medicaid. They're starting to see the, the impact and the value of reimbursing for the non-transports, because it saves them money. It saves them money with ER charges. It saves them money in overall healthcare. So I know that our state EMS association is watching this closely and working with KDHE to try to, try to get something to where we can get reimbursed for the services that we provide. We see this as a complement to the current ICT-1 program that's running out there with mental health. There's word that there's going to be some expansion of some of those mobile health, mobile health or mental health teams. This person could, could complement that and respond independently out to do some medical assessments with those teams. And we've also, we also have the 100 percent backing, support of the Office of the Medical Director to develop specific protocols for, for the, these response units. With that, I will stand for questions.
Well, I have a few, and I appreciate, this is something I asked just to look into a couple of months ago, when I heard the number, 35 percent or 30 percent of but there is a significant cost to those calls, yet we're sending an ambulance and either EMT and paramedic, and in some cases, two paramedics to these calls. So I wanted to find ways to modernize this department and modernize our approach to community health and, and crisis situations. I'm very interested in these numbers, I'm very interested in the program. What would be the next steps here? You'd mentioned there's going to be a decision package. What does it take? So if you're doing, what, 150 calls a day? How many calls a day?
Anywhere from 150 to 220, it, it varies.
180 calls a day? So you're looking at 50 to 60 calls are non-transports?
Varies.
By data, I mean 30%, right? So 30%, so that would be, so is the idea that you send a community paramedic out to those calls only, or how do you, how do you, I'm trying to understand how this mechanism works, or how we decide who to send where?
There's different ways that you can approach it. I think that we would approach it with, we've, we've currently kind of started standing up what's called Medic 11. When we have a standalone extra person because we're so fully staffed, or we've had to have an odd number of people so we can't have a full ambulance staffed, we stand up Medic 11. Medic 11 goes out and they are just kind of at-will responding to some of the low acuity calls that sound like that they wouldn't be transports and doing some evaluation. What I'll say is that our paramedics today on the transport units are doing everything that mobile integrated health is doing, but they're just, they just don't have the time to commit to really interface with other social services to get some of these people help. Some of the programs out there, you know, that go on reoccurring patients that fall, they, they go out and they do kind of a risk assessment and evaluation of what's the root cause of why this patient continues to fall, and it could be as simple as this patient falls because she has to walk her dog twice a day. So they find somebody to come in and walk her dog, which now reduces the amount of time that she falls and, and reduces her risk of injury. And so it can be as simple as that to as complex as that you go out and you're doing a medication reconciliation with a patient that has multiple medications from multiple physicians to get them on track, work with their primary care physician, work with Meals on Wheels to get people meals. So we, we could really, we're, we're doing this, we're just not officially doing this.
I, it sounds that way. I, I love this idea for two reasons. One, anytime you can improve service to the community and, and on the other side of the coin, also reduce costs, I think is something that we should invest some attention into to try to understand if there's opportunities to modernize this model. So I, I'm grateful that you put in, seems to be quite a bit of work already in, in the framework of this, and I hope that we can get consensus from the commission just to see through, to see if we can, if there's something that really makes sense for this community, so I appreciate the work on this.
Thank you.
Couple of questions. I'm just curious, is it, is it intended this would be, how many hours a week would we try to do this?
It would, it would be a full-time FTE. We would actually like to have two full-time, or full-time FTEs to cover 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, seven days a week. Obviously, if we can't stretch that, it would, it would be maybe Monday through Friday, we would just, we would have to see what the program looks like.
What you just described there, if that was basically half of the work, you said 12 hours a day, and not necessarily five days, five days a week doesn't necessarily make sense to this, it might be, our needs don't change on the weekend, basically medically, right?
Right.
So, so 168 hours, that'd be 84 hours a week we do this, roughly?
Roughly.
And two people?
If we had two people, it would be two.
168 man-hours a week, that's basically four man-ship, four-man teams, if you will, eight people to do that. So the cost here is, is per one responding unit for one 12-hour shift, correct?
The, the cost up there is for one, it, the cost up there is actually four if we had two FTEs.
Yeah, so kind of like ICT1, when I just did some spitball, you know, calculations in my head, I said, you know, to do this around the clock, it's going to be like $3 million, and people thought I was crazy, but no, I'm not, I don't think I'm crazy here. To do this, you probably need around five, again, for 50% of the coverage for the week, you're going to need about five teams and five vehicles, maybe they'll share the vehicles, but you'll need, so we don't really have the analysis, basic, if they're sharing vehicles, I assume, we don't have the analysis on that. This is for one team with one vehicle, and if the next team uses the same vehicle, that might lower the cost, but this is for round numbers, say it's $300,000 times five, we're talking about 1.5 million, roughly. That's a round number, that's for 50% coverage.
Right.
That's the type of analysis we need to see here. And this benefits, obviously, it benefits us in a way because we don't have ambulances that are going to low-acuity calls. There's a benefit there to the taxpayers, but it also benefits, I assume, Via Christi or whoever that would potentially receive these patients?
It, it could benefit the hospitals, which in turn benefits the community and benefits us, because if any of you have visited an emergency department lately, you can see that they are, they are full, they are stacked, they're holding patients for days. This would, this would eliminate some of maybe those transports that are bogging down the ERs for low-acuity issues. It, it's hard, it's hard to speculate and it's hard to, to come up with a number, but to me, it's just overall healthcare in the community, improving the healthcare in the community.
So back to my analysis here, if you tried to do it around the clock, it'd be roughly $3 million a year, just to say that. I think we ought to see, you know, what's the return on the investment to the taxpayer? How does this actually save taxpayer money by not sending an ambulance? Second of all, it sounds like...
Right, right, right now, it's $500 anytime an ambulance goes out, so if you took that times the 40 or the 16,000 calls that we don't transport, that's 8 million.
But that's still going to happen. I mean, we're not going to eliminate that entirely.
It could still, yes.
We're going to, we're going to reduce that some, let's say reduce it by 25%. Does that, in fact, is that 25% reduction, it may not be that number, but I'm just going to pick a number, does that cover the cost of this? I think that analysis needs to be done.
Okay.
And these are folks, if they're low-acuity calls, they're going to call, they know they're going to wait for someone to show up. It might be a while for someone to get there. It will not be an emergency response, right? They're going to say, we'll get there, it might be a couple of hours, but we'll get there. You're going to wait.
If somebody calls 911 requesting an ambulance, we're still going to respond. If, if we elaborate this program beyond just first response to actually developing a referral program where we're going out and doing home visits, these people wouldn't be calling 911. These people would be scheduled to be seen once a week for a specific number of days to, to improve their health, essentially, so that they're not calling 911 multiple times. So right now, we have several high utilizers in the system that we go and see routinely. You know, it's working with other entities and, and social work and, and maybe even their Medicaid provider to get them the, the services they need so that they're not returning to call.
So with these other examples, you have Lawrence Douglas County, Latha, we have, they should be able to see, I don't know how long they've been doing this program, but they should be able to see a change in their data as a consequence that their more expensive response has less responses necessary. It'd be nice to see that type of data.
I would be able to get you some information on KCK Fire, they've been stood up for more than a year, so they might have some information that I can pass along, but Lawrence Douglas and Johnson County just started January 1.
And by the way, didn't Wichita Fire just talk about something kind of like this?
Wichita Fire is doing something different as far as their first response, and I'm not, I'm not able to speak to the details of that, that's, that's not a program that, that is currently active.
Well, I think we need to understand that because I think it's their intent that they're going to try to offload some of the EMT response from their firefighters to separate response vehicles that would, they would still host them, I guess, but it's going to be not firefighters, it'll be someone who's basically, I think, EMT slash paramedic response, but through WFD, so we need to understand that, too. I'm not against this idea, but I, I want to make sure that actually there's a return on the investment. We're trying to become more efficient and lower the cost to taxpayers, that's the key. If we're going to add cost to the taxpayers, I'm a little bit concerned. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did something like this a few years ago where that we had a grant from Via Christi. It benefited them also because we weren't transporting people to Via Christi. I would hope that they would kind of sign on to this if we could move forward with it to help, I don't know if there's any grants available, but...
There, there are grant opportunities available, not with specific hospitals, but at the federal and state level that we're exploring. There's also the opportunity to partner with maybe one of the federally qualified healthcare clinics to kind of joint respond with some of those vulnerable populations that they serve. So the possibilities are endless, it's just getting, getting it going, because what it'll look like on day one, if, if we were to start this, may not be what it looks like on day 365. There, there's no, there's no ceiling to, to this kind of care, and, and obviously, our, our ultimate goal is to still respond to 911 calls when people call.
I thought it was a good idea when we had the test program going, I, I remember you coming in briefing us that you were dispatching every day for some of the people that you saw. You were transporting them 25 to 30 times a month for just the same individual, so we need to be able to solve that because that, that's a huge expense to transport somebody every single day. Some of the stories you came back to us with were that you found that people were having a problem with salt in their diet, I remember the story, and couldn't figure out why you were having to transport them every day, and then you found out that every day you went to eat at Kentucky Fried Chicken or someplace and had a double dose of salt, and so we were transporting them again. So we, it was an educational process also, not just a medical process, we had to educate them on, on what they were doing, but I'm, I'm supportive of this. My only worry is now we've got EMS dispatching, I'm going back to the 911 operators, they've got to make a decision, are they going to transport EMS with an ambulance, are we going to transport, send out our mobile mental health organization for ICT1, or are we going to transport, send out someone for this operation? So I don't want to put too much effort, stress on 911 to make a differentiation between all these, and, and I know that City of Wichita is sending out small units also instead of fire trucks, so somehow you got to work closely with 911 to make sure we're not adding more stress on our 911 operators.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, I would just say, I have a, one comment and then a question. I want to make sure, because I'm, we've got to find ways to modernize the approach in local government, and EMS is just one example, and, and I'm very much in favor of looking into this. Will there be an incremental cost? I don't know, because in my mind, the variable that we're measuring is, is the cost per call. There's a cost per call, and if we can find that that is a variable that, that matters, that the incremental cost in employment, I think, is offset because those employees exist per call anyhow, so the, the constant variable is the cost per call. If we can find ways to reduce cost per call, that's the measurement that matters in many ways, but it also, I think we have a burden of responsibility to improve care in our community, too, so there's a dual benefit here. So I appreciate your comments and Commissioner House's comments, I think that we can, we can measure this, but that cost per call variable, that, that's the, that's the data point that I think is most important. Secondly, we know that Wichita Fire is discussing their, what they do on medical calls, roughly 70% of calls for fire are medical calls, and they're talking about introducing an EMT program. Are we working with them in conjunction, chief? Are, are we having, are we having conversations with them and to see how a partnership could look like and what that would look like?
Yes, so Wichita Fire responds with us on every medical call of a certain priority now, today, and what they're trying to drive more towards, I believe, is just a specific unit that would respond to medical that's not responding also to fire. So they're, they're dedicated more to first response for the medical that will still respond with us.
Well, again, under the guise of modernizing our approach, the Wichita Fire budget is none of our concern, but the cost to the taxpayer in Wichita, which is the bulk of our taxpayers, is of our concern. So if we can find ways to, to partner in, in many of these pursuits to lower the burden and to modernize our public safety approach, I, I think it's in our best interest to do these things, and so what I'm asking for is a, is a three-to-five-year roadmap, a strategic plan of how we do some of these things. It may be hard to envision at this point in time, but, but that we need to envision for what this looks like in three to five years of how we modernize these approaches. And I think this is a great start, but I, I'd like to go even further and look at...
We would love to approach this as a system, as opposed to just Sedgwick County EMS, and so, you know, whatever collaboration that we can do with Calm Care or with Wichita Fire or Sedgwick County Fire, we're 100% willing to have a conversation.
You're firing me up, this is, this is good news. Okay, so let us know how we can help in that pursuit. I think you guys know, kind of, you've heard a little bit of what this discussion is, please let us know how we can assist in that, in that conversation.
Just one last thing, I know some people question, well, why, why paramedics to go out and essentially provide care in the home? Paramedics are, we're very well-trained, we're very highly skilled, we have very good senses about how to deal with patients on scene, and, and people trust us. We know how to deliver care in, in patients' home where a lot of people, like, that work in hospitals don't understand that dynamic, so we're, we're really good at that, and, and again, that trust factor that when people call and we show up, they, they have confidence that we can care for them.
I think it's great.
Okay.
Thank you for this presentation.
Good morning, Alora Forshi.
I think Nicole's got the handouts going around. This is somewhat misleading, we're not just talking about accreditation, I've got way more to talk about. All right, we'll go ahead and get into it. So Alora Forshi, you're Director of Emergency Communications, of course, thank you for having me. There are several things that we are looking at within 911 services to start moving, moving the ball forward with what we're doing and innovating the way that we deliver services. So just kind of thinking back over the last couple of years, we've really been in a strategy of just really focused on operations and covering the basics there, and then last year was really focused on aesthetically improving the work environment with the remodel and the new CAD system, and now that that is done, where we are ready to shift our focus and our energy and our attention to the mechanics of how 911 services work within the county. Some of these things are things that we've talked about over the years, some of them are new ideas, but let's launch into them. And this speaks nicely to what we were just discussing with that community paramedicine, is that we want to look at more specialized dispatching services. So there are a lot of things coming at us in the way that our public safety partners out in the field want to innovate services, and so to partner with them and to provide those services as comprehensively as we can, we need to become a little bit more specialized in what we are doing. So in order to do that, we have to change the model of how we have employees. So currently, we have a dispatcher one and a dispatcher two when they come out of call taker. The dispatcher one is that entry-level position, and then dispatcher two is when they are cross-trained on both disciplines, and I say both disciplines, EMS and fire, we kind of couple into one discipline, law enforcement into another. So, excuse me, the way that we want to restructure this is that the dispatcher one would continue to be an entry-level position, going from call-taking to dispatching, but you would choose a pathway, or we would help you choose a pathway into either EMS and fire dispatching or law enforcement dispatching. They would go into that position, of course, we would have the academy portion, the training and the on-the-job training, but then we have a different model of post-release training, and I say released from that initial training period, that covers a more comprehensive, robust continuing education portion of that, to continue to enhance their skills, make sure they're really just specialized in what they're doing, they know they can handle anything that comes their way. And then after six months, we would do an evaluation of skill set, and that would be the promotion to dispatcher two. Instead of being cross-trained into both disciplines, they would stay in that one pathway of either dispatching on EMS and fire or dispatching on law enforcement, allowing them to get some time and tenure in that role and just really become a better dispatcher in that. That dispatcher two promotion, again, is an advanced position, different continuing education or opportunities and training that would just really specialize them in that field. Somebody could stay their whole career as an EMS and fire dispatcher or as a law enforcement dispatcher, not necessarily training into both genres. From there, we have a dispatcher three position, and this is what we would have new on our staffing table. It would be a finite number of positions, so if you think right now, all of our, all of our positions, whether call-taker, dispatcher one, dispatcher two, are funded fully at a dispatcher two rate, so this would be 20 positions that would advance into a different reclassification, you'll see a grade 61. There's a finite number, about 20 of them are what we would be asking for. These folks are cross-trained in both disciplines, they would go through that skill enhance or that skill assessment in both disciplines, and these people would be the trainers and the subject matter experts within our organization. So not only are they used to train other staff, but they are embedded within the comm center, so that if a dispatcher has a question and a supervisor's not readily available, they've got somebody nearby within arm's length that can help them when needed. Sorry, I lost my train of thought here. So the grade 61 is currently what our supervisors are classified as, and so this would be a step up from that dispatcher two rate of pay, and it would go up to that supervisor rate of pay or what's our current supervisor rate of pay. Getting some numbers from budget, this looks like, like an additional $117,000, almost $118,000 annually to reclassify those 20 positions. Then because we would move them up to that supervisor rate of pay to create that stair step up, we would have to bump our supervisors up there, and that looks like around $71,000... Then, because we would move them up to that supervisor rate of pay to create that stair step up, we would have to bump our supervisors up there. And that looks like around $71,000 annually for the positions that we have in those, for those supervisors to go up that next step to create, or to, I guess, eliminate that compression issue there. Any questions on that piece?
How many of those positions are there? For $71,000, divide that by how many employees getting that bump?
I'm sorry, how many supervisors?
Supervisor positions, how many are there that adds up to $71,000?
There are currently 12 of them.
12, thank you.
I want to make sure. Oh, I'm sorry, Sarah, go ahead.
Okay, just one real quick question. From dispatcher one to dispatcher two, you said there's a six-month time period before they can go to dispatcher two. Is there a similar time period to go from two to three?
Well, they would have to be cross-trained and evaluated at that dispatcher two level in both disciplines. So, it's going to take, I would imagine, two years would be the minimum we would look at before we would even evaluate for a dispatcher three.
Okay, thank you.
So, two questions. One, so the additional, so reclassification to grade 61, and then is one move, $117,000. The second move is reclassification to grade 63 for supervisors. That's to prevent compression? Is that the?
Correct. So, that way, our dispatcher threes and our supervisors aren't at the same level.
So, the total is $188,792, that's what? Okay.
I'll park yes. And I'm not sure, because we have that pay increase coming in March, I'm not sure that that's reflected in these numbers. So, that's why I'm saying these are loose numbers.
Understood.
And we will make sure that it's.
Starting right now, dispatcher one, $21.11, is that starting wage?
That sounds right.
And dispatcher two now is $23.27, correct? And then call takers are $19.14, is my number's right? Okay.
Correct.
And then this dispatcher three is an incremental position. Okay, I'm on board.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry, just one more question. If there's going to be 20 dispatcher threes, do we have, how many do we have today that could go into that position if we change this?
Not 20.
Not 20?
No. I would, I probably have 16 or 17 trainers right now. And part of the issue with that is they're, so they are compensated an additional wage while they are training, but when they're not training, they are not. And that's where some of the frustration for them is that they are still a go-to for people on the floor. They know, you know, this is a CTO, I want to go to them for questions. And they would like to be compensated for all of their time.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And part of that is some different expectations we'll place on them. Like, you have to be at a very high skill set level to be in this role. And it would be a very elite group.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Chairman. Just as we're talking about dollars of increase, it's relevant to know what is their rate. That'd be nice to know, in terms of a percentage increase. That'd be nice to see that. So, I don't need it right now. But second of all, I don't see anywhere on here a total cost for this plan. Is there a fiscal note for this entire?
So, again, if we were to have these 20 positions that were elevated to the dispatcher three, and then our supervisor positions elevated up, it would be the 117, almost 118, and then the 71 together. So, a little bit around $200,000.
Okay, so just add those together. That's all I have to do is add those together, and I'm done. Okay, thanks.
Yeah. Sorry, I should have put that all together into one. I apologize for not. Anything else before I move on into? Okay, so this is one way that we are wanting to innovate. Second is continuing education. And again, these go really hand-in-hand. If you recall, we've asked for a continuing education supervisor. We are looking now to just rework some of our teams into this. So, we have our quality improvement team currently. There are two positions that are funded for that. We borrowed two other positions from operations that we would like to not borrow from operations for that. And then there's one supervisor assigned to that team. We did in 2021 request five FTEs. That's when the two FTEs were granted for that. And the industry recommendation is to review 2% of calls for service. And so, right now, that team is really focused on just reviewing calls. So, we review medical calls, fire, EMS calls, and radio traffic to ensure that we are meeting performance standards. And then, you know, that's part of the training, the feedback, everything that we do within that team. We would like to enhance that team and pivot what we're doing with it to where it's not just a call review, but really being proactive in how we review calls, we get that information, what do we do with that? We want to make sure that we are really using that to improve services and what we're providing. We would like to have six positions assigned to that team, so four additional, and then the one supervisor we already have. What we will do is we will be assigning those teams to a shift. So, there would be two people per shift. They would work that shift's hours. Right now, it's a Monday through Friday, 8 to 5 type job. But they will be assigned to a shift to track trends through call review. And then they will provide shift-wide, specific training on a regular basis because they will be there during that shift's hours. And so, if you recall, we do a pre-shift meeting for every shift that comes on duty, and we do training during that time. So, they would take over the training portion, or the majority of the training portion that happens during that pre-shift meeting. Then they're onsite to provide that one-on-one feedback with a higher rate of frequency. So, right now, if I have a third shifter, for example, that needs some better support, I have to have one of my QI team members flex their hours within that, which they do. But I think having them there during that shift not only helps to create that relationship between them and the shift that they're serving, and then also, again, that more continuous, on-the-spot, ready-to-go feedback that they need to be successful in that role. So, we would have four additional positions we'll be requesting for that. And then moving on to accreditation, I guess, any questions about continuing education? Can I move on? Okay, looking at accreditation, we are evaluating an accreditation manager position. We have some different options for accreditation. CLIA is more of a law enforcement-driven accreditation process. But it does cover some general dispatching facets that would speak to both fire and EMS dispatching as well. And the International Academy of Emergency Dispatch really focuses on the call-taking portion of EMS calls, fire calls. And it depends on what software system or protocol system you're using for them. Right now, we are using an emergency medical dispatch protocol system. So, we would only be able to get accredited in the medical portion of that. But we are looking at a fire dispatch protocol system. So, that would bring in that accreditation piece or that option for that accreditation piece if we move forward with that. And then APOC, which is our Association of Public Safety Communication Officials, which is a 911 organization, has a training program certification. It's not an accreditation, but I would like to pursue that just to really make sure our training program is everything that we need it to be and have a stamp of approval on that. I did talk to, for example, Derby does the CLIA accreditation for their law enforcement. And I was asking them, well, do you always have to have a full-time accreditation manager? Like, it's not just to get it started. They had tried, they had an accreditation manager. They cut it back to part-time and ended up having to hire another full-time person for that because it is so intense and robust and comprehensive that they really needed somebody full-time to measure that. So, I don't think you can do this with a temporary position. I don't believe you can do it with a part-time position. I think that becomes a full-time, permanent staff member with that.
Do we have any sort of fiscal note on the accreditation pieces? Obviously, the one FTE, but the cost of accreditation. Do we have any idea what we're looking at?
So, we're working with HR right now on a job description. And part of that will help to determine what grade that position would be at. So, I don't know yet where we've landed with that. And then, as far as the accreditation, I know that Elizabeth was looking at some different costs that go with that accreditation. And I don't know any dollar amounts off the top of my head. I know the training program certification is $500. It's a really easy one. The CLIA, I believe, is a couple thousand.
So, nothing substantial? We don't have to pay a?
Any accreditation program is going to contain a facet of operations, training, quality assurance, everything that Laura has addressed in previous slides. It's going to be part of the accreditation challenge. So, the costs are embedded in those kinds of things, the screens that you've already seen. I think if we can get her to where she wants to go staffing-wise and bolster her training and her quality assurance, however that looks, I think that goes a long way to the operations part of accreditation. So, I think the costs are embedded in her previous slides.
Okay.
We are aggressively working on pinning down costs of what it, to bring in on an accreditation, goodness, let me gather my thoughts, to bring on an accreditation manager and to bring these accreditation programs to us because we would like to pursue that sooner rather than later.
Yep, okay.
Any other questions on accreditation?
I'm just curious, but do we have national data on how many emergency communication departments actually have accreditation?
I don't, but I can gather that.
You have to know, yeah.
Yeah, I will gather that.
What's interesting about our 911 is even when you do comparatives within the state and the region, there are very few operations like what we run here. Where she is, her team is the 911 for everybody. Every fire, every police, sheriff, every EMS. That's a fairly, in this state, rare bird. So, when you start doing comparatives on who's doing what, it's difficult. Same EMS, same way. We have a very unique model of EMS here, relatively speaking. There's a zillion models of EMS out there. When you start doing comparatives and cross-comparisons, it's tough. So, I don't know if you can, we'll do the best we can on answering that question.
Sure. And that's, you know, as mentioned, CLIA very specialized into law enforcement, which is the bulk of the calls that we take in dispatch. But we certainly want to make sure that we're not just focused on that. We want to focus and make sure we're serving our fire partners, our EMS partners. And so, yes, I will get data on it, but that is, it is not always an apple.
It's 80%, law enforcement, 20% fire paramedic, basically.
Approximately, yes. Yep.
There's two, the theme between these two presentations is, in public safety, which is generally a reactive business, what Angela presented is a proactive model to do something ahead of the problem and to try to, long-term, better solve a problem through efficiency and cost savings. And though there's upfront costs here, what we're trying to get to in 911 is a proactive model which assures good training, assures good policy development and management. And this is a next-level discussion for emergency communications.
And I would just say that I feel like since I've been here, we've been talking about how we would love to get to a place where we can be proactive. But because of the staffing challenges we've had, we haven't been able to do that. And so, I'm really grateful that we've prioritized compensation and everything that we've been talking about today so we can get to this. This is really exciting for public safety in general. So, I'm just, I can't wait to see what we're going to be able to do with EMS and in 911. So, appreciate you being here and putting this together.
Yeah, thank you. Go ahead, Sarah.
Yeah, I guess one other thing in getting accreditation, is there any type of, I mean, it sounds like there's certain things have to be in place for accreditation. But I'm wondering, does accreditation also cover things like performance measures? Calls answer so much time. Is there any third-party review, if you will, that comes in and says, we've audited you in some regular basis to make sure that we believe that you're doing all the things you should be doing? We have the right to, you know, approve the accreditation or not with recommendations on improvement, for example. So, it's not just checking boxes, it's also actual review and performance measures in addition to. Is that correct?
Correct. So, I do have experience in the IAEA sort of, or accreditation. We used to be accredited. And we stopped doing it 10 years ago, maybe even 15 years ago, because it became very much a check-the-box. There was no push for improvement. There was no, I didn't want to just send in a check. And it was actually a decision that I was over quality improvement at the time I made, because they were cashing a check and saying everything was good without any assessment. And so, my understanding is that has changed. But that's what we want, and that's what we see out of these other accreditation programs, is that they do send somebody onsite. As part of Derby's CLIA accreditation, for example, they come up and visit, their accreditation manager comes up or their person from CLIA comes up and visits dispatch, makes sure everything is as they say it is. They check things, they offer suggestions. But everything is pushing that department to get better, to be better, to serve better, and to make sure that they are not just checking a box, that it actually has an operational result for that. And so, that's what we want to get out of that as well. And yes, there is, they do come and check it with a third-party assessment.
Timeline-wise, if we go down this path, how soon can we actually have an approved accredited EC system?
And again, it depends on which flavor we choose. That CLIA accreditation process is a very long one to get into because there's just so much to it. And so, I imagine we would not be able to even submit ourselves for accreditation until next year. It would take getting that accreditation manager hired and starting to put those pieces together as to what that accreditation, what we need to have in place for that accreditation to be satisfied. The IAEA accreditation, I think we could do this year. It's an easier one from my experience with it. The APOC training program certification, I believe we are meeting most of those criteria already. And so, I don't think that would be one that would take very long. And so, I think that by the end of 2025, if we wanted to do all of these, I think we could have all of these in place.
Yeah, so I didn't understand until just a moment ago that we're intending potentially to go for all three of these.
I think that that would be our best bet, yes.
I think we ought to have a stated goal. I think that ought to be our stated goal. And again, I'm not trying to diminish the importance of the Citizen Advisory Board. But I'd like the B OCC and your department and our management team to lean forward. We believe this is what we should be doing. I'd like to state that as a goal today or very soon formally, however we would do that. So, regardless of what business they get involved in in that review, that advisory council or whatever, it's clear that we believe this is important, that we are moving forward with accreditation because we believe this is the right thing to do. And it's obviously going to be an investment. And I think it's probably a good time to do this in light of the fact there's been, you know, some criticism in the community. It just shows that we are very serious about this. We want to impress upon them that we have done everything we can to essentially have a third-party come in and make sure we're doing things the best, the best way possible.
Absolutely.
Thanks, thank you, Chairman.
You know, again, we think we're doing things right, but until you have somebody else that comes in that says yes or no or suggestion, we only know what we know. So, we need to know what we don't know. And that's what this helps us figure out. Lastly, real quick, just going over technology on some things on the horizon. We know that fire station alerting has come up multiple times as a pain point with the fire departments. So, we are looking at, again, bringing that, that was part of our 2024 budget request, that will be coming to you again this year. And the emergency fire dispatch protocols, I brought that up earlier. We would like to move forward with that. That builds in some efficiency in call-taking for fire calls that I think would be helpful and appreciated from, not only from our fire partners, but also from the community. Of course, when you call 911, you want things to work well and go fast. And then there's also some automated fire dispatching software that we are looking at that, again, helps to build in that efficiency and consistency in the way that things are handling and allows our dispatchers to focus attention in other areas as we're trying to make decisions about the best equipment to send when we have these multi-disciplinary teams that we can send places. So, just some technology coming that will help support what we're doing and the innovation that we're looking for within our team, so.
Laura, on these items, will they show up as decision packages? There'll be fiscal notes on all these, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's very good. Thank you for this presentation. I want to talk briefly on the compensation side of this. My opinion that I'd like to move, I think we are good.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I'd like to move quickly on the compensation piece and the dispatcher three. And I just think this is something that is an urgent matter for Laura's department and for this community. What kind of timing is this? Where could we be on that?
That's a hard question. I think both of these plans, EMS's and 911's plans, are contingent upon proper staffing. If you don't have proper staffing, none of this happens. So, number one is we have to make sure we have base proper staffing. And that's part of the action we're asking you to take next week with a 911 compensation adjust. You've made a 911 compensation adjust last year. So, we're continuing that and trying to stabilize her base employment pool and making sure we're getting people wanting to apply for jobs. I think the rest of this, I would love to roll some level of this. It depends on how fast she can hire and how fast she can get her staff in order. I would love to roll whatever we can in 2024, but the bulk of this, honestly, is probably going to be 2025. And we'll consider the decision-making packages as they roll. And we'll have a bunch organizationally. But we'll consider the decision packages. And I'm going to ask you to come back to the mic, Laura, because I'm not sure if I'm answering his question, what you see as reality of what we can roll and how fast on some of the earlier slides you presented.
So, part of, the funding is one piece of it, but then we have to know how this is going to work and progress in our department. So, for example, Elena, my deputy director, was talking this week with Denver Emergency Services because they have a similar model. How do you decide who goes into what discipline? How do you do that equitably where you're not just willy-nilly picking people? So, those are some of the logistics we need to figure out. We did dedicated dispatching, is what we called it, years ago, and ran into staffing issues where you would have these EMS and fire dispatchers, and you would need overtime for that, but you didn't have anybody that was cross-trained into that discipline to work that overtime. And so, that's where it fell apart years ago. So, we know that there are those pitfalls. Elena and I were both around for that. So, now we're navigating how do we avoid those pitfalls that we know can occur. Having the training plan in place of. Having the training plan in place around that, how do we assess them after six months to make sure that it's a proper assessment, that they are where they need to go? Those are the logistics that we are trying to work out now. Unfortunately, it's, it's just Elena and I, and so we don't have a really deep bench administratively, and that's what we're trying to deepen also. And so, I think that, I would love to say we could do this in six months. And I know that seems like a long time, but that really, I think, gives that time to put the structure in place to make sure we're not going to rush through it and have it fall apart. We want our staff to feel really confident in what they're doing. And if we go through it too quickly, I think that it will quickly run into discouragement from them and, and loss of faith in what we're doing.
Yeah, noted. I think, I appreciate that.
I, I, I mean, there's two phases to this. One is just our operational ability to implement. And two, I haven't asked our, our chief over here about budget impact and financial impact. It comforts me that we're looking at third and fourth quarter logistically, because I think that will match up better for us financially. But we have to get her advice on how to move forward with this, too.
Okay, well, I appreciate that, and I appreciate your approach to this, and, and you're being a good steward over the timing and what this looks like. Where's your staffing at now?
We are right over ninety percent. You know, it's so discouraging as we make gains, you know, we lose some. But this is a unique skill set that you have to bring to nine-one-one. So I, if we're, I, my goal is always to be over ninety percent. There are going to be some that come in that, once we get there, either they realize they're not a good fit, or we realize they're not a good fit. And so we're running through those growing pains now, but.
Well, Laura, I'm going to say it one more time, that every department in Sedgwick County Government's important, every public safety department's important. You're the conduit to all of those things, and what you do is of significant importance. And I just want you to know that, I think, some of the, it's never fun to be the focus of things, you're, but it's undeniable on this job that you're going to be the focus of a lot of different things and conversations. You have handled it with grace.
Thank you.
And I just want you to know that many of us are really proud of the way your staff and the way you have handled some of these things. I'm most proud that you're walking here today and saying, I want to get my staff the resources they need to do the job well. So that we're not sitting here wallowing, thinking, you know, woe is us. Like, we're going to be proactive and we're going to get you the stuff you need, the resources you need to do your job well, because the output to this community is important. And that, and we want citizens to know that, we want our partners in public safety to know that, we want you to know that. That, that your staff deserves it, this community deserves it. I think you're going to get our best shot, but you have handled everything with grace. And I just want you to know that we, we appreciate that.
Thank you. I just would say, you guys have really set a firm foundation with that compensation piece. We would not have grown into where we are without that, so I'm very thankful for that. And now this is just what we're, this is the house we build on that foundation. That compensation was a game changer for us, so.
Very good, thank you. Break. Fifteen's good. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Kaufman, sir.
Chairman, Commissioners, mostly this is an opportunity for you to converse, but I'm going to give a little bit of a, a background and some framework for you as we speak. The county's involvement in homelessness has been limited, but long-term. More than twenty years ago, Calm Care received a PATH grant that paid for about two positions to focus on mental health services delivery to people experiencing homelessness. I don't know what the P A and T stand for. The H is homelessness. Okay, all right. Okay. So those two positions then became Center City, which is about eleven or twelve positions. Again, their emphasis is on the mental health services for that subpopulation. So it's really part of the Calm Care Adult Services. We talked a little bit yesterday about leases. The Center City program is co-located right now at U M O D. They could co-locate with adult services, they could move back into adult services. They could move some or all of, or some of their staff probably would be best to the MAC as the MAC gets developed. But a part of it depends on how U M O D continues to be used going forward in the community as well. But we do have a lease at U M O D right now to handle all of those staff and some other adult services staff. But that turned into the Center City program. It's grant-funded almost exclusively. And again, their emphasis is on outreach, to try and bring individuals that are experiencing mental illness, that are homeless, into services to help address that mental illness, which then can help them move beyond homelessness. In 2007, the Task Force to End Chronic Homelessness jointly appointed by the city manager and county manager, developed a plan that included a Housing First component, funding for a program called Housing First. So we added a couple of staff in the Division of Human Services back then. That org chart doesn't, has changed. So that program reported to me when I was in the division. Now it's part of Calm Care, but it has additional staff that are working with the city jointly-funded to serve about sixty-four people that are experiencing chronic homelessness. So again, a very small subset of the homeless population. And the effort is to pair a grant or a voucher with services to help individuals maintain housing. So that's the involvement of the county in homelessness for the last twenty or twenty-five years. Things have changed a little bit right now. We see a different homeless population than we've seen in the past. Two, the differences come in two different ways. One, the impact of substance use is greater and is different. It used to be alcohol was primarily or almost exclusively the substance that contributed to homelessness. Now there's lots of different substances, and the substances that people use are worse for them, cause psychosis, all sorts of different problems. So that's one aspect that's different. And another thing that's different is the, the population experiencing homelessness used to be almost exclusively males between twenty-five and fifty-five roughly. Now it's much more gender diverse, and then we've got younger kids, we've got older adults that now end up falling into homelessness for lots of different reasons. So it's a different population, it's much more complex population to serve. But the other things that is different right now is that there's some community will and some community support that is different. There, there is no federal agency, state agency, local agency that's responsible for homelessness. Historically, it's a problem that has been addressed primarily by the faith community and nonprofits, with a little bit of support from government entities. Right now, the city has activated themselves in this space much more than they have in the past. So there are new partners that are, and new partnerships that are being formed, that there's a task force that we're represented on as well. But it's a fractured system that is an expensive system. And the biggest question for all of you is, how do we want to participate in that cost and, and the ongoing responsibility related to homelessness? Do we want to do something different than what we're doing right now? And I'll leave it to you, be happy to answer any questions about what I've seen, but that's really a conversation for the commission.
Okay. So I think the question is, what is the role of the county? Do we need to specifically define what our role's going to be? Is that where we're at right now?
Specific toward, if you guys are anticipating something that would have any impact of budget or finances for twenty twenty-five?
Thoughts?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. We have, we have a lot of roles that we could fill, but not all of them are really in accordance with what our main mission is. So our main mission is Calm Care Crisis, to help the homeless. In some cases, there may be, because you see the, the demographics is changing a little bit, the aging may be involved in it a little bit. Depending on what happens health-wise, we may have the Health Department involved in it a little bit. But beyond that, I don't see a role for Sedgwick County. We have to stay in our lane of traffic. We were very gracious, I thought, last year, because there was an emergency to put $200,000 into an emergency shelter. Even though we had several en bancs earlier discussing this, it still ended up that it's an emergency. That's not our main lane of traffic. So I don't anticipate us, at least myself, supporting large sums of money going towards support of this program, because that's not our lane of traffic. So as long as we stay with the things that are our focus, that are the mission of Sedgwick County, which is Calm Care Crisis and, and some of the other ones that may be ancillary to that, that's where my focus is going to be. So that is a very short summary of what I think is our mission.
Very good. Mr. Howe?
I, I believe I pretty much agree with what Commissioner Dennis just said. We talk a lot about consolidation, right? Another form of consolidation is not having two entities doing the same thing. We're, we are the leader when it comes to the mental health arena. And the city, I think, should trust us to be the leader. And that provides services within Wichita and the entire county, frankly. The biggest homeless challenge is in the heart of Wichita. And they've always been the leader on the issue of homelessness. We actually hand over our grant funds, trust them to administrate those grant funds on behalf of the county. And I think they do a good job with that. I would like to be very supportive of what they're doing, help them with wisdom, help them with strategy, help them with making the best decisions, help them with legislation, but not with finances. I think that's going a step too far. But I also like to see them continue to trust us with things like nine-one-one. I know they're talking about doing nine-one-one, they're talking about doing EMS or a paramedic slash EMT thing, because they don't, they don't trust our nine, our EMS to provide that care and that type of thing. They've, they've dabbled in mental health a little bit. They have, they continue to do things I think that are arguably a county service. Either, it sounds like they're not happy with what we provide, so that's the motivation to do, to do that. But we talk about consolidation. If they're not happy, we should work together to resolve those problems, make them happier, if you will. They should trust us to provide the service, and we should trust them to provide a service that's a city-centric service. We can provide as much expertise and wisdom and help on the, on their fringe, but really the financial obligation belongs to them.
Other thoughts?
Well, I'd want, and I think Chairman, you've been a, and of course, and Commissioner Howe have been very active in this last year. Thank you for that leadership. As I understand it, and maybe, Ryan, maybe you can update us, I believe the city has got the funding, the funding responsibility that they've accepted on, on building the MAC. I don't think that we're getting asked to participate in that, because that's, they got their own sources of funds. But I think what we may get challenged with down the road is the ongoing operations of that. I don't even think it's been determined, you know, is it a, is it a G W P-type model where somebody else runs it and coordinates the nonprofits and, and other, and have the Calm Care wing and whatever? Who knows what that looks like? And it's too early to, for me to, to decide. But I do think that that ongoing, and we saw this in Colorado Springs, and David and Sarah have been down to, to San Antonio, there's going to be an ongoing operational component that, who knows? I think that's where we could get drawn in, at least for a, an ask. But that's, that's ongoing, if it comes our way. I, I don't know enough to say what that ask might be, or what we'd have to maybe consider or not, but I'm comforted that, that at least the capital structure of the, of the campus is not in our decision tree at all. So, and, and I think some of us have been engaged with the private side, business community, especially downtown, that have kind of consistently said, well, just give us a plan so we can, tell us how much it is, so we can go generate it. So I think there's opportunities to, to mold the, the ongoing operational component. But it may take our, our leadership a little bit in that community, business community and others to get that done. So I've said kind of a lot without saying anything fin, without saying anything finite. But I think, Ryan, if you know, if, if you or Jim know anything further to share, I'm just sharing just so we all know what may be coming around the corner. Impact budget, I have no idea.
I'll give you some thoughts, but.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Okay, thank you. I agree, I think that the real ask is going to be in the operational piece of this. And, I mean, we're already talking about what are our core services and how do we limit other things? I, I'm really cautious to even start considering growing what we do at this point. I think we have a very clear lane when it comes to the situation, and even with the MAC, like our pieces with Calm Care and substance abuse, I don't think it's to take on homelessness and try and take anything, any part of that away from the city. I don't want to duplicate services, like Commissioner Howe was saying. I think there's a concern for that if we start getting more heavily involved in that. So I, I want to be supportive, but I, I'm not at a place where I think we can afford to take on a budgetary impact for this, at this point.
I guess one more thing, you know, the, there's two pieces in Topeka that's moving right now. The governor's, a lot more than forty million dollars is being debated literally yesterday, and I believe it was Monday this week. That was for the Senate and then, and then the House. And those, both of those hearings went very well, by the way. Even the one yesterday went very well. And I think there's, there's gained, there's support growing for that. And what that forty million dollars is, is for is dollar-for-dollar match to local government for infrastructure, for shelter that's tied into a MAC-type of resource. And I believe that right now, that's looking pretty good. I'm surprised we're actually, in fact, the bill twenty-two, twenty-seven, twenty-three got blessed yesterday. It did. It was sent over to appropriations and sent back. So it is now a exempt bill from the deadlines, which was a big accomplishment. They're trying to schedule a hearing for the bit, for the twenty-seven, twenty-three hearing. That, that a conversation's happening right now. So I just say all that to say this, that Wichita's identified the shortfall, you know, how much money they have available through different sources and the shortfall. And we believe that the dollar-for-dollar match, that money they already have set aside would qualify for the dollar-for-dollar match. So if this is a successful process to get this bill through and that forty million dollars stays in there, the facility, frankly, is almost taken care of. We're close. It's, there's some risk, but it, we're, we're not that far away from being successful there. The intent of that is private sector operations, but government, we would, the government, whether it be Wichita or Sedgwick County, and whatever role we have there, would have to take care of the facility, the maintenance, the utility costs, things like that. But the operation goes inside that building, would be done, would be done through private sector. That was the model that we came up with. That was what was, that was discussed through all those meetings we had last year. So the intent, the intent of that group, the intent of that effort was to say, there's a facility that, that part's taken care of, provides plenty of shelter space and a MAC operation, but it's all private sector operated, and the government's role would be to essentially to maintain and the facility and facility costs that are ongoing, not the C I P part, but the operational part of keeping a facility maintained and open. Whether that's just Wichita, or that has, we have a role to play there, that's, that may be a question we have to talk about some more.
Well, I appreciate it. And this conversation is relatively unavoidable. And it's unavoidable because the crisis is growing. The crisis is growing because the, the factors that are influencing homelessness are growing. Mental health, substance use, domestic violence, eviction, access to affordable housing, the tight housing supply, those are all influencers that are, that are magnifying this homeless situation. And anecdotally, you can just drive downtown or north of the core, or south of the core, or Maze Road, and, and you can see the problem is growing. And it's hard. I mean, I, I think this is difficult to see people, human beings, have a crisis right in front of your eyes, a visible crisis, and housing, lack of housing is a, is a crisis. So it, it's hard. I, I would also say that, that the illusion that the county isn't already very involved in this space financially is not correct. I mean, we, we are involved in the C O C, the Continuum of Care, with our Shelter Plus Care Program through Calm Care. Now, that's a grant, but that's a, this year, I think it was four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to offer housing vouchers to those that are S P M I and, and follow that program. We also are very involved in the Housing First Partnership with City of Wichita. It's almost three hundred thousand dollars, that general fund dollars? Is that general fund dollars? Are those grant dollars?
Those are general fund dollars.
Those are general fund dollars. So, we're already spending $300,000 a year in Housing First vouchers through general fund dollars. So, there's, we are already there financially, we're already at the table financially. The question is, what does this look like long-term? And I think our role, and I've said numerous times, trying to keep us in our lane, and not to get out in front of any other partners, has been a challenge because, because the situation is challenging, and it demands leadership in this situation and demands collaboration. It's why we've asked the state to pony up some dollars. So, everyone's at the table, we're already at the table. I think there's room to discuss with our partners at Calm Care, what does it look like at the MAC in the future? Do we need to, not just onsite, but do we need to really strengthen the program for mental health and substance use onsite at the MAC? I would just say, there are four things we have to consider as to why this is unavoidable from Sedgwick County government. The first is the safety issue, is these individuals that are experiencing homelessness are vulnerable, and the people at Third and Broadway and Second Topeka, they're not all homeless people there. There are people that are trafficking. Sheriff, I'm glad you're here, you might be able to help reinforce this. There are traffickers and drug dealers preying on a vulnerable population down there, and that is compounding their crisis. It's compounding their crisis, but it's not just safety for those that are unhoused, it's safety for our community. You had mentioned it earlier, but the drugs that we're dealing with, and not everybody that's homeless is a substance use problem, not everybody has a mental health problem. I can give you a dozen stories right now of people that don't fit that category, but those that are experiencing substance abuse that are, that are on our streets, that are unhoused, the drugs that are influencing those outcomes are different, correct? The methamphetamine's different, it's inducing psychosis. The synthetic drugs, synthetic marijuana, the K2, that's inducing psychosis, and we have example after example of example now of unhoused people that are attacking citizens and our EMS personnel. So, it's, we've created an environment to where this is a very volatile situation because of the crisis. So, this, it's not just optics of people experiencing homelessness that we struggle with, it's a safety issue, and there's a public safety issue. Mind you, we're getting ready to put a biomed campus in downtown Wichita with 3,000 med students running around. It will be surrounded by homeless encampments if nothing changes. It's a very volatile situation. The second is the economics of this. There's $700 million of economic growth happening in our downtown core right now, but we're also, Pete, you could, also, we're having a hard time keeping some businesses there. It's our business community that's yelling the loudest to do something about this. 20% of the state's economic output comes from Sedgwick County, and our business community has had enough. They're demanding people and our leadership to do something. So, economics matters. But, the last thing is high utilizers. These are high utilizers of public services. They didn't say it publicly, but Angela's going to send me a report today. At the homeless shelter, the emergency winter shelter, there are days that EMS is going there nine times a day. Nine times a day. On average, you're going there three and a half times a day. So, EMS, fire, jail, the sheriff could probably tell us about the impact at the jail with our homeless population. I know Villa Christie can tell us. Sorry, I keep mentioning the sheriff, and he's trying to hide, but, but this situ, it's just unavoidable for us. We're going to run into this headlong, and our community is demanding leadership in this. I'm the first guy that's talking about fiscal responsibility, core services, all of these things, but public safety, economics, behavioral health, which you cannot have a balanced behavioral health approach unless homelessness is a part of the equation. And the high utilizers of our public services, there's, we're in this thing whether we want to be in this thing or not. So, we've just got to figure out how we step to the mic and step to the table and shape these outcomes from a leadership standpoint, because our constituents are demanding progress. And if there's no leadership from across the street, if there's no leadership elsewhere, it's incumbent on us to lead in this space. We have to lead in this space. So, Sheriff, do you have any feedback on the public safety piece?
So, a lot of what you've just mentioned is true. You have the folks that distribute different types of drugs that prey on those individuals that are, that we see as homeless. There's no doubt about that. You also see the crime rates in the downtown area go up because they got to somehow be able to afford the illegal substances, so the break-ins, the larcenies, the burglaries. I will tell you, the, we, we do see some homeless that come into our custody. Most of them are in and out. Jelling is not the answer to that, we knew that years ago. With what the homeless task force is working on to have a area to take individuals that experience homelessness, to get them on, off the streets, to get them into safe living, and then provide them wraparound services to get them back on their feet, that's the direction that this needs to go. Putting them in jail is not the answer. And so, you know, in the, in the 90s, we had that, and as a beat cop, when you had someone that, you know, 20 degrees below zero, and they're sitting out there under a bridge, you'd pick up their stuff, you'd take them to what was called Dodge House. So, we had the resources then, so that's why you did not see that big of a problem. Those resources disappeared. Now, you see the problem. So, it's important to that collaboration and those type of things. I'm not going to weigh in on who should afford it, but the collaboration is extremely important. And, you know, we've met with, the Mental Health Substance Abuse Coalition has met several times with the downtown business folks, and they're done, and they want this addressed, because it's costing Wichita money. And so, those are the issues, and they're difficult issues.
Please.
And I think it's, I think collaboration is critical in this, 100%. I do like the idea of moving some of our Calm Care folks into the MAC. I think that's brilliant, because those are the people that we're going to be serving anyway, so I think that just makes it a lot easier for everybody to have those warm handoffs and make that, that piece of that easier. My concern is raising the budget of what we already give, and maybe the dollars that we give to this now can be spent in a different way, I don't know. But, I've heard from almost everybody up here, and I'll throw myself in this, nobody wants to raise taxes, and if we're going to take money away from somewhere else to put into this, I mean, that's going to be a really hard conversation to have, because every dollar we spend goes to serving someone in this community, and I have to be very cautious in how we go about giving additional money in one place and taking it from another, and making sure that that's the appropriate way. So, I don't want it, for any of this to sound, for people who watch this, that we don't want to be a part of this, because we have to be a part of this, we're already a part of this, and we need to continue to collaborate. There's no path forward unless we do, but we have to be very cautious with how we increase any budget that, that goes to homelessness now, just because of the situation that we're already in, and not wanting to have to cut services somewhere else. So, as we have this conversation, if anybody, you know, does watch this, I just want to make sure that that is clear.
Well, I would agree. On many fronts, the cost of this is unknown, and I think our role, our lane is squarely in supporting Housing First and supporting the program Housing First, supporting what we're doing through Calm Care Housing, and supporting our substance abuse and mental health approach. That's what we do. It's just finding ways, how do we do this the best we can to reverse it? The trend line is not going to improve organically, it's going to get worse. Like, how are we proactive to make sure, because this is already costing this community a significant amount of money, so we've got to figure out that we're utilizing the resources that we are deploying, make sure that they're being deployed correctly.
Can we talk about, and the MAC has yet to come to fruition, but can we forecast, best we can, that if the, if the city successfully opens a MAC, what operationally to support that from behavioral health, public health, substance abuse, things we're already in, what that would look like? And then, tell me what happens to open door, if you can. Tanya mentioned that facility yesterday, and our role in that facility. What happens if there's a MAC program? Does that facility change? And then, lastly, of all the dollars that we're spending, do you see any modification or change of how those dollars are spent if the MAC model comes to fruition?
No, I can't predict any of that. I mean, part of the issue is, we don't exactly know what the MAC will look like in a way. UMOD has hosted a number of different service providers in the past, they haven't been open 24/7. There will be differences between UMOD and the MAC, and so, in terms of Calm Care's involvement there, we could have a couple of staff there to help manage, and then, again, do outreach. Again, the goal for Calm Care is to get folks into mental health services, whether they're experiencing homelessness or the rest of the population as well, but we would certainly have a presence there for outreach and to get people connected to services like we have, like we do now at UMOD. We co-located at UMOD for a couple of different reasons. One was that we had a space problem, we didn't have a place for those staff, and the other was to help support the ongoing operations of that function. The rent that we pay helps contribute to their addressing the operational needs of that facility. I don't know that they have determined yet what their future is after the MAC opens. They're operating right now, when there's a winter overflow shelter that's a few miles away. I don't know if they intend to continue to do that. The operation of the MAC has not yet been clearly defined, yet who the operator will be. Once that's determined, it may help us understand what's going to happen with UMOD, that current site. Long-term for Calm Care, the staff that, that are not outreach staff that serve the homeless population may be better served if they're co-located with other adult services, because we can utilize group spaces and integrate that population into the other adult population. We can serve people from lots of different locations, and so, if there's a need from some mental health supports for people at the MAC, Calm Care can certainly do that. But, we don't know how the MAC's going to be scaled and sized, and we may get, there are other people in the community that serve that population as well, and so, it's really going to be interesting to see how the MAC gets filled up and who's there.
I think we're probably three, maybe four weeks away from the MAC program being announced. I would say, though, in that time, Mayor Wu is asking to have three en bancs with the county this year. One topic per en banc instead of having a multiple, and I think we're going to have one in March.
Yeah.
And she's requesting, and Sarah and I have been talking with her and Vice Mayor about this, is they're requesting the first en banc be on the topic of homelessness. So, I think it's, it is behoovent on us to make sure that we have some conversations about specifically in defining our lane and what our role needs to be and what Calm Care could do. So, when we get in this meeting with the city, we can say, "This is what we want to do, this is what we can do, this is Calm Care's scope of service," and continuing with the Housing First Program Partnership, you know, things of that sort. So, we probably need to get very detailed on what it is we think we can do based on the scope of what we believe the MAC will be.
Can we get a list of everything that we do correctly around homelessness that works with the city? That might be helpful for all of us to have that information before we walk into that meeting, and then we can reference what we're already doing, and if we, if there is a discussion about expectations changing, we can kind of point to what, what we're already providing and to see if there would be, if they think that there would be any way to maybe adjust that to make up for some of the things. It just might be helpful to have that going into that before. Thank you.
Okay. So, I, you know, I'm, all of this can't happen overnight. I'm anticipating no modification necessarily to the 25 budget discussion. Down the road, 26, 27, an hour to yours, who knows? But, we'll allow that to flesh up a little bit before we make that, that call. Just to go backwards just a bit in some of the discussion, I think there is, this, this concept of lane of traffic is interesting, and the city's cognizant of it too, at least the manager is. When they, when they wanted to get involved into the mental health field response arena, they did reach out, and we had good communication, and actually, those bodies out there are Calm Care. Joan is in charge of that, so the city was aware that they were entering into an arena that was not their wheelhouse, so they partnered with us, and I don't know if those are rolling yet or not, or soon to be rolling, but...
We're still filling vacancies, but yeah, that's operational and up and going now. And they're paying for the staff that we hire and manage and have the expertise to help with.
Sorry, one question about that. Do we have a, I'm sure we have a contract of sorts with them on that, but is there a length for that? Have they said this is going to be operational for three to five years, or what does that look like?
I'll have to get back on that.
You know, I think they, I think they funded that out of ARPA.
That's my, that was my concern, because I don't know how long it's going to go.
And if that's true, there'll be a beginning and end date on that. We might, we'll flesh that out and answer that question, but that's my, that's my memory of that, they were using ARPA dollars for that. Now, on the EMT side of the coin, we have had very, now, I know EMS has conversations, but that's not gone to a level above the operators, so, and that is still yet to be determined. They're forming that on the city's side yet, but we have a history every time when we get into whatever work, and the sheriff reached out four or five years ago when we were going to redo the CAD system and RMS, we reached out to the city, offered partnership there. Sometimes they take it, sometimes they don't, and generally, we find that if we partner on things, it's just much more effective and efficient, and we're paying a price today, and on the city's behalf, the chief that made that decision not to come together with us on RMS and CAD is gone. The new chief has inherited the problem, and we have problems today because of that decision, so we try to avoid that. But, on these cases, and I think the city is sensitive, and we talk all the time about, let's do what, let's work together, but let's stay in our own lane of traffic and support each other. I think they're very cognizant of that too, and as we go forward, we'll continue to have that, that dialogue. I don't know that we can make any fiscal decisions or even forecasts yet until the MAC comes into a little bit of focus, and I'm hoping maybe the en banc will provide that, but, and then we'll get, we'll get a listing of expenditures or how we are financially into that arena before the en banc.
Very good.
Okay.
Can I add something real quick? Kind of aside, and Tim will catch up with you, yesterday at the WSU Tech Board Meeting, the board approved five new programs, and one of them is a quasi, like an associate's degree, a two-semester certificate of a mental health, whatever you call it.
Probably a mental health tech, which will be really helpful also for the state hospital.
Well, and that's what, so Sherry, Dr. Utash had, you know, started saying how the gap between, you know, what the state requires that's pressure on Calm Care, that you have to have this advanced degree of perfection versus, but her and their team are working hard in the state to get a, to get it authorized for a two-semester associate's, whatever you want to call it. So, I need to probably engage the director of that program with you and Joan or whoever, because I think it's, is that the first you've heard of that, maybe?
Yeah, I have. And the issue, but one of the issues is, the payer gets to dictate what level of staff you have delivering services, and so...
Well, that'd be helpful, I think.
Yeah, but I think there's opportunities there with the state to say, open up your Medicaid plan to expand and pay for some additional services.
Okay, thanks.
Very good. Any other questions on this topic? Off we go. Thanks, Tim.
We'll keep moving. Nicole can switch the screen. The next topics really kind of all just mesh together, is, we'll have a little bit of discussion. We had, Lindsey and I had visited with each of you earlier this week, and the questions we want to dialogue over the next, you know, hour or so, here are the commission's vision on core services, and, and talk through that, and then, secondly, get some commission insight onto bottom line, how we want, if we're going to capture valuations, if we're going to try to not capture all valuations, if we're going to try for revenue neutral, what does the end game look like as far as, what framework are we working within as we begin to consider some of the things you've heard here, and a lot more to come from other departments organizationally? So, this will all just kind of stream together. I had, last night, Lorian facilitated this for me, and Carly and Lee got a, just a quick sheet together. How do I do this? Harold?
No.
You can, it's just two slides. Okay, so what we came up with, and we, I just went through the org chart. Now, this is not 40-some departments, because we put some divisions together, like finance and HR, but this is just a list of kind of everything we do in the county, and I think it's a two-pager, right? Flip up and then flip back. Yeah, okay. And, well, there's a, I've got a handout. Maybe I should hand it out?
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Hard copy of it for you. So, Carly and Lee, thank you for this yesterday afternoon while we were rolling, to put this together. This kind of talks about functionality of the county, so our, our mission, and since we focus on property tax, that's the discussion at state level and local level, we then looked at what's general funded, what's not general funded, and then, in many cases in the county, because of our relationship with the state of Kansas, there's a hybrid approach. So, we have lists... So we have lists by functionality, department or division, whether it's funded by grant or general fund or both. And then just the part that is general funded. So in 2024 budget book, our general fund is 200 million and some change. So I haven't added the right-hand column yet. But this gets us pretty close between 180 and 200 million, not all of it's here. That's the main cost of what we do. So as the commission answers the question of core service, and then as we go down this, it's interesting to look at each category of whether we provide services for everyone in the county and whether we're obligated to provide, provide services on behalf of state of Kansas when you look at each of these categories. So if you look at sheriff, for example, sheriff provides patrol activity for rural Sedgwick County, unincorporated county, and supports small towns. He doesn't provide necessarily too much patrol service for City of Wichita, Derby, the people that have their own police departments. He does provide exclusive service for jail, though. So when you look at his, his budget, he is, he is statutorily commanded to run the jail and then has to provide a public safety in unincorporated county. I don't want to speak for here, sheriff. But so he is, he's, he's listed as both. District attorney, same dynamic. And on downward, you can see, we have, and there's just some very interesting things on there. Fire is not included. And who else didn't we include? Oh, M A B C D is not on here. M A B C D is 100% revenue generated operational. Fire has its own, has its own taxing entity. So they're, huh?
Arena, too.
Okay, and same with, same with interest bank arena. So as you look through this, it gives you an idea of where you're spending your money, your tax, your tax money. And so if we're going to come in and want to shave, it gives you ideas of where we need to shave at. And then, or if you just want to try to keep it neutral. So go ahead and flip the page and we can look through the rest of this. I don't think there's any other anomalies on here. The planning department is a split with Sedgwick, or with City of Wichita. So this, this gives us a base to start of where your general fund dollars are at in case there is a desire to stay the same, increase, or shave. Other than that, I just opened it up for the, for any commissioner that wants to talk about core services or what you see as important moving into the, into the budget discussion that we can focus on. Also, if you're thinking of anything that you want more data on as a way of workshop or something separate away from this arena. I've already got two listed. I've got, we're going to bring senior centers back, an aging budget back. We'll bring road projects back to where Lynn can drill into a little bit more of how he manages roads. But anything else that you want to add to that list, we're all ears now, so.
This is really good. But could you make, make an extra column? I think, or I'll suggest it, that, that would just say if it's statutorily required, yes or no? Just so we know that, hey, we, we're required here.
We'll modify this document and add.
That's a good, this is a really good document, though.
I think part of, we can certainly try. But one of the things that we have to note is that there are discretionary services, even with things that are mandated. So for example, finance, we have to do a budget. We have to pay our employees. We have to pay our vendors. But the way in which we do it is not necessarily dictated. How many people we have doing it is not necessarily dictated. So I want to be careful about just saying in general whether or not a department is dictated. So one of the things that we'll be working on in the coming months, so congratulations to everyone in the room for hearing about this now, is we're going to take the.
But Lindsay, some, some of the departments are, are required just as a, as a business. You have an H R department.
Right.
It doesn't matter that we're in government or not. So that's, to me, is not relevant, is really what's the state require us to have to do?
And so one of the things that we used to do is something called a prioritization inventory. We're not going to do the prioritization part of it, but we are going to take our last version of the inventory programs and ask departments to say, yes, we're still doing this, or no, we're not. Here's something new that we do. And so we can provide an actual list of programs and then have the conversation, hopefully during budget reviews, about what is statutorily dictated and the manner in which we do it is maybe dictated so that we can have that conversation about what's core. So this is an excellent starting point, but there's more nuance to it than just a department is, is required.
I really liked that third column where how much, you know, like the sheriff has other funds as well. I'm sure grants, whatever. But that third column is just what our general fund expense is. That's really good.
Everything on the list, misqualify, everything on the list is important. What, what we need to start really drilling down on is what's discretionary and what is what you consider core? That, that matters to us as we shape the budget.
Can I add a, can I add just one more comment on that? Is, it's not even what is core, it's what do we do with things that are established as not core? I think that's the bigger question. Things that are not core, what is the approach? Do we just continue as is and pretend like they're core? Do we, does it ma, does it really matter, I think is an important question? Things that are not core, is it possible in some of these departments that we, we determine as, and it's all important to the community. Core may not be the right, the right term that we're using. It's all important. But the question is, if it's not what we deem as what we call core service, are there opportunities to partner, consolidate, privatize? What are the areas that are not core? What are, what are the areas to modernize and make more efficient and reduce cost burden or improve service? I think that's where my head's at, is, is we begin to look into the future, and maybe not even in 25's budget, but as we begin to look three years, five years, 10 years out, the pressures on our community and the pressures on our property taxes are not going to go away. I mean, we need to grow in this community, right? Economically, we need to grow the tax base in this community to lower the burden of property taxes on our, on our constituents. But things that are not core, can we partner? Can we consolidate? Can we privatize? Can we, are there ways that we can look at those things differently so that we can make sure that Sedgwick County government, which in my purview, and it's my opinion alone, is different than a city municipal government? We have different core strategies, different core purposes. What do we want county government doing compared to city governments? The 20 city governments in Sedgwick County? My point is, I, I think the real question is, things that are not core, what, what, how can we be creative on these things so that we can make sure that they are, we're protecting the importance of this community, but also protecting the taxpayer that is not being overburdened with property taxes? Maybe it's a shift to sales tax. Maybe it's a shift to consolidation in some areas. Maybe we look at the 20 cities in Sedgwick County and say, hey, these are community benefits. How can we work together in these things? I'm just imploring us to be creative. I'm imploring us, I, I just don't know if I can live with myself in four years when I'm, and say that we didn't do the best we can to modernize local government. I just, every budget year, just grabbing a little bit of the assessed value growth, passing along some nominal raises and just going about our business. I just think that we're in a season in this community that we, we should be creative and we should be looking ahead and we should be modernizing. And I just have such an appetite for trying to do these things right now. And I hope that we can find some consensus to do exactly that. Not, maybe not in 25, but a three-year, five-year plan of getting us where we want to go.
Okay. I, I am glad that we're having this conversation now because I don't think this is going to be a 25 change. We're starting to talk about significant, substantial changes to how government is, is done. So I, I think it's, it's good to start this year, but I don't necessarily think that we're going to overhaul our budget for 25. As we're having this conversation on what's core or discretionary, or however you want to put it, I can tell you personally what I feel is the right path, but that doesn't necessarily mean that's what our community feels like. And so I would love to engage them in whatever way we can. I don't know if that's through surveying or what that would look like. But it's, it's our community's tax dollars that we're spending. And so I, I think we need to have them be a part of the conversation on if we are going to change government and what our role is and what that looks like. They should have a seat at the table on helping us make that decision. So I, again, I know that's, that's a huge ask and I don't know how that goes exactly, but I would love to engage that further.
I was going to hand the mic to Lindsay, but she ran away. So I think Nicole's going to address that question on involvement of the community.
So commissioners, one of the things you may remember last year is we rolled out a budget simulator tool, but we just did it with employees as kind of a soft role. And so one of the things I've asked is if Nicole can kind of speak to that tool and maybe what some of our options could be potentially to use that tool to do the community engagement.
So the tool that Lindsay's referring to is set up as a simulator. And so it gives us options to say what, what areas, if we have to make a cut or you have to make an improvement, whether way or the other, you can shift it. And so it gives you, let's say if we go and we need to find just a guess, random number, 10%, so you can go through all your options and the community can tell you in their opinion which way they would go. So there's that opportunity. And then there's also other community engagement survey options that we have out there, too, that we can look at doing for 2025 and beyond.
That's great. Are we still, we're still going to have a discussion on priorities? That's a separate discussion, correct?
Commissioner Haldis asked that. We're on the discussion of core, how you envision the end game on whether we're going to capture all the taxes or not. And then we're going to, you all got a shot, the free wheel at the end on any topic.
I just wanted to make sure we were still going to get to that. I, I would just say that as we talk about where we're going and road maps and long-term planning, there's a short-term planning, that's what we've been doing the last two days. Long-term planning. I'm grateful when we, the last conversation on homelessness, we all agree that, listen, we, we, let's stay in our lanes. We, if we have another governing entity doing something and we're doing the same thing, it's a burden to the taxpayer. Okay, we can make a list of the 20 cities plus Sedgwick County government, of all the things they do that we also do. And, and we've, need to make that damn list. And we need to literally say, how do we have a conversation with this community about modernizing government in a way that makes sense long-term? I, I, I admit, I may have a different purview of what county government looks like comparative. And I ran on that and my constituents liked what I was saying and voted me to come in here and do exactly that. And, and many of you have the same experiences with things that you ran on. But I ran on county government focusing on its core services, partnering, consolidating, sharing, privatizing things that are not core services, lowering the, the reach of county government to empower the 20 cities in Sedgwick County to do the things that they should do. And, and I'm going to continue saying things exactly like that because I think that's what lowers the property tax burden to our consumers, our constituents. But it also makes government service more efficient. I want to have the best core services in the entire country. Compensation, stability, service. And we, our constituents deserve that. But if we're doing all kinds of other things, it really isn't our core, then we have to sit here and figure out how we afford these things. And I just, I would rather just, what we do is core. Let's do it to the best of our ability and have conversations creatively about things that aren't core and how we can fund them differently, maybe via sales tax? You hear me say that a lot? Instead of property tax dollars, once or twice a day? But let's just, man, I just want to, I want to create a path, a three- to five-year path to rally this community around what county government looks like in five years.
You know, it's easy to sit outside the commission and outside the county government and be very critical because may not be aware of what really goes on here. And I don't, I, when we get to the last part of the agenda today, I want to talk about Lindsay's sheet from yesterday because I think this is telling a story. You know, when people run for this office, there's an assumption, and it's very popular. And I don't mean to be critical to anybody on the bench here today. But it's easy to be critical to say, there's a lot of waste and the answer is going to be consolidation and find efficiencies and trim the fat out of the budget. I hope when you look at things the way we look at things from inside the organization and look at things very closely, there's not a lot of opportunities there. We actually have a pretty lean and mean machine called county government. And that's to the credit of a lot of good management, both for our fiscal management, our manager's office, and on it goes. And if I ask, I, I go to lots of constituent meetings where I, it's ad hoc and I just sit down and talk to people about stuff. And their assumption is, you guys got, you know, my taxes are going up. How dare you guys? You guys are, just, just stop spending so much money. So I'd like to get the conversation over to, where do you, where shall we cut? Where are we, where are we wasting money? And no one ever has an answer to that question, right? In fact, when I start telling them what we do, they're like, well, yeah, but that's all the important stuff. Just go cut the bad stuff out of the budget. And I think to myself, but you don't understand, that's really the honest answer. There isn't a lot of bad stuff in the budget. In fact, I haven't heard them find anything bad in the budget. And a matter, there is, there is a, there is a matter of, a spectrum of opinion. Some people would say, let me just rip the Band-Aid off here. Some people would say Sedgwick County Zoo is not a core function. Some people would say, yes, it is. Well, that's, that's, we can have that debate in the public. You know, I don't know if I want to suggest we would cut that because I don't think that's smart. I think there actually is a return on the investment that's real. So I'm not going to suggest we cut that. I, I don't think that's where we should, should go here. But could someone make the argument, that's not a core function? Yeah, they could make the argument, right? It's not the same as sheriff's office. And I could, I could make the same argument about, about exploration place or extension center. Actually, I don't know what in Kansas law compels us to have a health department. I suppose we have to have one by law. But maybe they don't need to be spending that much money, I don't know. Back in 2015, we trimmed a million dollars. It was some suggestions to trim a lot more. We ended up trimming a million dollars out of that. And then the Wichita Eagle came out and said, we're going to kill, what was it? We're going to kill 50 people a year roughly because we're not providing public safety, I should say, public health the way we should. We're going to be responsible for killing 50 people in our community per year. I forget the number. It may not be off, I'm off by the numbers a little bit. But my point is, they argued dollars per spending equals saved lives and on it goes. So I, I think what we actually have here primarily is not, if you were to really work really hard and find a way to save, let's say, two, three, four million dollars in this budget, maybe you could get there. You're going to cut some services doing that. The people out there, for the most part, are going to notice the quality of life that's missing. And most people are not going to have an awareness of anything else because most people don't use 911 in a year. Most people don't use EMS or fire or sheriff in a year or with the, or the, any of these things. So they may not even have an awareness that there's a bin reduction in service. But they're going to notice the quality of life stuff missing and they're going to get upset. At the end of the day, it's easy to run for office and say, I'm going to fix this budget. I'm going to cut all the fat out and get this thing efficient. Honestly, and I, I hope to talk about this more in a minute. But my biggest fear is we've done such a good job maintaining our status. In, the argument I would make is we are very efficient. And we provide the stuff that people really want us to provide. And if those things are true, then what we really have right now is a problem of education, getting people to understand what's going on. It's not like we could really, just really dive in and say, we're going to find a way to do things differently because what we're doing now is not a goo, is not a good way. There's been a lot of smart people before me and before everybody in this room that got us to do things in a smart way. And what we have right now is a pretty good system. And maybe there's opportunities here and there. But I would say to not throw out the baby with the bathwater here. Everything's not bad and everything's not broken. What we have right now is a problem of communication and education to the taxpayer. So again, I, I, I don't like more taxes. I, I would prefer a sales tax over a property tax, but that requires legislation to get there. I think there's a conversation to be had there. I think we have some other opportunities legislatively as well. But at the end of the day, I, I think what we, what we have here is, I think someone already said this. Most, everything we do in Sedgwick County, most of it is required core function and everything has a element of discretionary icing on top. I mean, sheriff's office is the best example in the room. Sheriff's, we have to have a sheriff's office. We have to do a great job. Do we have to have exactly the number of officers he has on his F D E sheet? Maybe not. You could trim one off, maybe? That's icing perhaps, but you have to have, you're not going to get rid of the sheriff's office, right? And the election office, another great example. We want to have great elections. You know, you have to have a certain amount to run an election. Maybe we don't need 100% of everything that's been requested. That's icing, but you have to have the election office. And on it goes. Every department's like that. At the end of the day, we've, we trimmed all the, all that down to a minimum of things. You're going to see a lot of angry people in this community. If you save a few million dollars in this, they're going to have a few dollars less tax to pay. That's true. They won't even know it. No one's going to be aware of that. I know there's another sheet here on our stack we could probably talk about, but it kind of makes that point. So there's, there's another sheet in the stack today, talks about if you trimmed out so much of the middle of the, how many savings? Is someone going to talk about that today? Part of our wrap-up? That's a pretty good sheet and I would like to get to that at some point. But maybe when we get to the final agenda. at some point. But maybe when we get to the final agenda item today, I want to spend a little more time talking about this because I talk, I'll bet I've printed out maybe a thousand copies of this paper. I hand them out everywhere I go and talk about this. And everybody I talk to, when I get done, they're like, wow, Sedgwick County, you're not the problem. We are actually not the problem. Okay? Thanks, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate it. As you look at the sheet, remember, we're representatives of the people, but we've all got five different ideas on something. But the way that we do business is that we'll ask the people a couple of weeks before we pass this budget, and then usually the day we pass the budget. At that time, it's really too late to change anything whatsoever on this budget. So we do it because it's a process that we're supposed to do. But we can't take the feedback from the public and make any changes because it's way too late. There's a lot of things, people would take a look at this and say, well, we don't need the Parks Department. We don't need the Sedgwick County Zoo. We don't need the Exploration Place. But we do because it's quality of life. And that's what's going to attract the workforce of tomorrow to this community. So should we cut those? Well, no, it's going to hurt our growth for the future. So the public doesn't understand that. And they all want us to cut property tax because it's the most hated tax there is. Maybe if we take a look at the future, maybe somehow we could add some additional sales tax because that takes income from people that traveling through and are visiting the city and so forth. So maybe we need to investigate other sources of revenue because we can look at the sheets and we can see what the legislature has cut out that's impacting our decisions every day. We pretty well got down to the bone on everything. So first thing is, I really think that we need some kind of town hall meetings much earlier, very early in the session, so that we can explain to them, first of all, that a lot of these things on here, you may not need that service today, but someone else needs that service today. We can't cut it. You may not want to go to the zoo, but other people do because they want to have someplace to take their children. So somehow we need to educate the community early on. But if we're going to cut anything, we need feedback from the community on what they don't value. And we need a very strong consensus of what they don't value because, as I said, some people don't value things because they're not going to use them. If I'm 80 years old, and I'm pretty close to that, maybe I wouldn't go to the zoo. But other people do, and that's critical. So I would like to see us, I don't know what the statutes are on how soon we've got to have public comment on the, on the budget before we can pass it. But I think we're doing it way too late. We need to do it much earlier so that we can get the feedback. But we have to explore other ways of getting funding. And I don't know what those are other than maybe increasing fees some places. There has to be a different dialogue on where we're going instead of just relying right down, 55% of our budget relies on property tax. And so Mark Clark is going to be the most hated guy in the world here in March or wherever it is, when he sends out his So what do we do in the meantime, or as we're preparing this budget, to inform the community and also to figure out what they need as far as they believe the most important things? I looked through this and I can't tell you where I am going to cut. The other day, I had a meeting with Tom and Lindsay, and I'd already printed out our org chart. And I was going to sit down, I had my highlighter out, and I was going to highlight the things that are core services. And then I said, as I, as I started that, my sheet was blank when I was finished because it said, I can't cut HR. Maybe that's not a core service. But if we don't have them, we can't do everything else. I can't cut finance. It's not a core service, but we can't do without it. So I handed them a blank sheet of paper rather than what I planned on doing on what the core services are. Now, I do believe that the idea that the manager came up with on having someone go into these different areas that are core services and coming back and saying, well, your job, and I'll pick on the sheriff because he's here, he's a friend. You're important. You're 40% of our budget. But does everything that you do as important? And are there some things in there that we could cut? So we need somebody that can go in and do that. So I agree with that decision to take a look and see if we can find somebody that can go into each of these core services and find places that we can. Maybe we're doing something that's great, but we don't have to do it. So that's, that's a long discussion. But I, I look at this and I don't know what to cut.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. I'm going to put a bow on it because the pizza's getting cold. Okay. Well, I'm going to finish here. Now, no timeout. The cost of government is increasing. And it's increasing for a good reason, compensation, because we got to stabilize government services. That's a good reason. But the cost of government is increasing. This budget's going to be greater than last year, correct? It will be greater than that, yes. The cost of government's increasing is because of a good reason, compensation. It's a necessary reason. Simultaneously, property taxes in this community have met a threshold. The increases in property taxes are hurting people. Small businesses, those on fixed incomes. Me, you, any of us, it doesn't hurt us. But it's hurting a vast majority of people in this community. We have to acknowledge that. The third thing is the way to alleviate the cost of government going, the rising cost of government is reform. It's not to cut. There's nothing to cut, man. There is nothing to cut in this budget. The way forward to alleviate the growing cost of government is reform. Functional consolidations in areas, sharing services across our community better, that, it's reform. But the cost of government is going up, and property taxes are hurting people. We've got to alleviate the burden of property taxes. We've got, we are good enough to be creative long-term on how to do that. There's nothing to cut in this budget. You're not going to hear anything from me about cutting. There's nothing to cut. We got to, we got to anchor into compensation, stability, and making sure our core services are great. But the only way forward is reform, long-term. It's the only way forward to alleviate the growing cost of government. And on that note, let's eat some pizza. 20 minutes. Thank you, guys. Good chat.
Okay, on the agenda, we are about done with core services. And then we'll go into open and discussion. I'll give everybody a heads up in the audience that before we leave today, you'll have a microphone and you can talk about any questions or concerns that you may have since we have leadership in the room here. I want to just, I want to talk about some earlier town hall public opportunities. We'll do that before we leave. I'm interested in ways forward on any type of, if we can get to that detail today, if we want to just let that simmer on a migration to a sales tax and a property tax model, then that may not, that may be at a bigger audience actually than this. And then just a couple of other things we can mention to, to conclude the discussion we just had. So the last, we still haven't answered, I'd like the commission to talk about, as we formulate this budget, are we going to, what's your aspiration? Revenue neutral, capture growth, capture pieces of growth, or how do you want us to move forward with the planning of that?
Okay. So everybody gets a shot here. Jim, would you like to begin?
Sure, I guess. I could do that. So I guess a couple of things. You know, you talk about basically reinventing pieces of county government to save money. And I think that's really our biggest opportunity. If we can do something significantly different, there's potentially some cost savings there. But these little haircuts around the edges are just not significant. And I don't know, there's a lot of opportunity there. But you know, I'm a big idea guy, and I sometimes I get these ideas and they don't go anywhere. But I throw these out there because maybe they have merit. I talked about the health insurance that'll be going, not a single comment, which was surprising to me. Okay? I think if we did that, by my calculations, there's millions and millions of dollars worth of potential savings there. That's reinventing, if you will, county government. So don't just dismiss it because it's me talking, okay? Couple of other big ideas. Talked earlier about, I think the biggest problem we have is taxpayer awareness of what we do, taxpayer education of how things work. And in fact, it goes a little bit further, but I talk about county government. A lot of folks don't understand different sources of revenue, that their property taxes and sales taxes goes to fund certain things. I actually do think, and I'll repeat myself from previous years, I think we ought to dedicate a sales tax to certain things because it's not property tax. And I think that people understand that if the Sedgwick County Zoo is funded through sales tax, it's just, it's less offensive to them, okay? So I think we ought to, we ought to have some, some guardrails within how we allocate funds between sales tax and property tax. There's also a lot of unawareness about other revenue sources that, for example, when they drive down the street and they see a billboard that says, get a COVID shot, it makes them angry because at the bottom of that billboard says Sedgwick County Government. And they're mad because they think we're using property tax dollars for something they may not believe in, may not believe it's the right way to spend money. So we have a lot of opportunity when it comes to education. So again, I spend a lot of my time meeting with literally hundreds of people talking about this type of stuff. And I mentioned a few minutes ago, that this long sheet is one thing, I'll bet I've printed a thousand copies of this handing them out over the last couple of years. I have people from other counties asking me for, how do we do this? And they're trying to mimic what we're doing. Because when you walk your way through this sheet, you, there is a conclusion to be made. And that is, we are really very efficient. And compared to what they thought we were, this is educational. So I'd love to walk people through this sheet. And a couple of things on here I could just point out here, the cost of government is less than a penny per dollar. And how do you qualify the dollar? Is it dollar of, one, for every $1 of personal income, they're sending, they're spending less than one penny for everything that Sedgwick County does. And I think that's extraordinary. And that number, by the way, has gone down overall. It just inched up just barely from .83 to .85 on this particular sheet. But end to end, it's gone down by 11%. One thing that's actually different on the sheet this year is employee wages are not as bad as they were before. They've actually bumped that up quite a bit. I'm not saying there's not work to do, but the previous sheet that we had before was almost embarrassing. It was so bad. And so I think that's a correction that probably needed to be made, obviously. But when you compare ourselves with reasonable metrics like Consumer Price Index, that's line five, I'm sorry, line six, assessed value growth, which is based on the economy. I know people think it's commissioners telling the appraiser what to do. And I have to educate people on that, too. We don't do that. It's market-driven. Assessed value growth and wage income, compare ourselves to any of those things, and CPI especially, we actually are lagging behind the growth trend lines of everything else you can compare us to. Did I say that right? So when people see that, they're pretty happy about that. And they're, they have to concede, well, that's not what I thought. Again, I'm not so mad about you guys. They might still say, well, please just cut, you know, cut spending somewhere. I'm tired of paying too much tax. Well, a couple of things to what Mr. Commissioner Beatty said a few minutes ago, I think it is time, you know, cities, cities can get up to 2% permanent sales tax if it's voter-approved. They can also do temporary sales tax. It's a little bit easier to get temporary sales tax, but they can do permanent sales tax, I believe, up to 2%. Counties are limited to 1%. Of course, that happened in 1985, I believe. And that was primarily for infrastructure, especially Kellogg and City, City of Wichita and Sedgwick County have focused a lot of our half sales tax revenues. And 50% of that money has gone primarily towards Kellogg. But other infrastructure and other cities outside of Wichita and Sedgwick County, actually outside of Wichita, have spent that revenue, 50% of that revenue on their own infrastructure, which is, again, a property tax reduction. And so when people understand that, I said, by the way, one of my calculations, it's almost unbelievable, actually. Because of the 1% sales tax, we've lowered our mill levy in Sedgwick County because all of the revenues, this year, about roughly just under $40 million of revenue to Sedgwick County, half that to infrastructure. But the infrastructure would have to be maintained through property taxes if it wasn't for the sales tax. The other $20 million is going towards basically the same things that property tax goes to. So if you look at $40 million and how much one mill generates in Sedgwick County, it's roughly a six-mill reduction in Sedgwick County. It's property tax dependency because of the 1% sales tax. Six mills. And that means everybody in, everybody in Sedgwick County, including in Wichita, they have a six-mill reduction of money they're not paying to Sedgwick County because of the 1% sales tax. Wichita is going to get a little more than 80 million, like $84 million, I think, is the current projection for sales tax this year. And for their mill levy, that's a, I believe it's a 18-mill reduction. If you calculate dollars per mill and that revenue stream, it's about an 18-mill reduction to citizens in Wichita. Add that together because of the 1% sales tax, someone's not paying 24 mills property tax if they live in Wichita. So to the legislature who thinks we're simply just raising property taxes, I think that's a pretty good proof. That's actually not true. If we have a different revenue stream, we actually do lower the property tax. If it wasn't for the 1% sales tax, we would have to levy that through property tax. We would have no other choice because everything we're doing is necessary. It's not discretionary. It's 99% absolute necessary. So with that in mind, if we were, if we were to ask the state of Kansas to let us exercise our, our home rule authority, we don't have constitutional home rule, but we do have home rule. I would, I would like to say, if, I'm not an advocate for more taxes, I'm an advocate for shifting revenue source from property tax to sales tax. I don't want to be taken out of context here. I do think that if we put it in front of the people that we would lower property tax, and again, imagine if you will live in Wichita, another, another 24 mills, if that was to happen, then I think people might be in favor of that. But you got to explain it to them in such a way that they, they trust you. I do think another increment of sales tax would be about the only way to really lower property taxes substantially. So I'm an advocate of that. I don't think the state legislature is going to trust us in this, but I think it comes back then to education. Brings me to another good point here. Kansas Policy Institute, I like them generally. I think they do a good job educating people about things that are government budgeting, that type of thing. They're very good, pretty good at that. The state legislature has to pass a budget this year. And I know that Kansas Policy Institute's been very hard on local government, saying we have to live under Senate Bill 13, no growth, right? That doesn't really make sense to me because I think things cost more this year, right? So you asked a question about, should we just live under revenue neutral, revenue neutral cap? I don't think that's even possible, and I would never advocate for that. But the state of Kansas has had incredible growth in their budget. Their trend lines are steeper than our trend lines. Let me say that again. They're growing their budgets faster than we are in percentages. And I can prove it. I got charts to show you. But Kansas Policy Institute's recommending, if you will, a state budget they call the Responsible Kansas Budget, which includes a 5.43% increase above last year's budget. And they base this on population growth, which is pretty flat in Kansas, and, get this, inflation. I find that comical, that they don't even, even KPI, who advocated for Senate Bill 13, does not want to live under Senate Bill 13. They're recommending, if you will, a 5.43% increase, which by the way, is a conservative growth trend because they're going to go a lot higher than that. Having said that, to live under a revenue neutral rate is ridiculous. It's not going to happen. So I have so much more I could say on that. One of the things I'd like to do, this is, again, a big idea, I would like to see us change how we do property taxes in the state of Kansas entirely. The state's talking about reducing the 21.5 mills. And if you don't know how that, what that is, it's 20 mills for schools. It's state-levered. It's per statute. They do it for every single citizen of Kansas. If you live in Kansas, you pay rent or mortgage, however you live, you're going to pay 20 mills on your property. And that's collected for schools. Then the 1.5 mills is for state-owned buildings. They're talking about knocking that down to something, they said about two mills. I suggested, I reached out to everybody on tax committees and suggested they actually knock it down, not two mills, but actually 1.5. And why would I say that? Because I want them to move the 1.5 mills for state office buildings from property taxes to other sources of revenue, ideally income taxes or sales taxes at the state level. And that leaves 20 mills exactly for schools. And that leaves twenty mills exactly for schools. And with that, there's an opportunity. I'm looking at Kelly. Where's Kelly at? And our treasurer's office, they have someone here?
Here.
There you go. Oh, good. So this is going to change the way we do a couple of things, I would suggest. I would say that rather than having our total tax bill divided by two and one payment go out, or one bill go out in December, one bill go out in May, we would actually change it so that local government sends out our tax bill in December, just like we do today. Our fiscal year starts in January, and we will levy everything for, for local taxes through that December tax payment, and it goes to fund local government. And then I would like the Kansas Department of Revenue to send out the May tax bill, and it's called the Kansas Education Tax. And it picks up the bond payments for the schools that are local, the local budget, the LAB, the LOB, the twenty mills, all of it. Everything that you, right now, you collect because those are state-owned schools, state employees, those teachers are state employees, those are state properties, everything about it is state. And we shouldn't, we shouldn't have, we shouldn't have the burden locally to levy property taxes and give that money to the state for a state owned, for state operation. They have the, they have the bandwidth to do this. So I would like to see us advocate, advocate to change how taxes are done. I'll tell you right now, if people are mad about property taxes, when they find out that roughly fifty percent of my tax bill is my Kansas Education Tax, and the other half is for local government, I don't think they're going to be as mad at us as they are today. It changes the understanding of the people we serve. It's very educational. The legislature also wants transparency in how school funding happens. I think our biggest opponent might be the schools themselves. But nevertheless, state fiscal year starts July one, they would get their money right before, just like we would do a December payment right before the fiscal year begins. I like the idea of bifurcating these two tax payments, ones for local government, we handle it locally, the, the check is to Sedgwick County Treasurer, and we distribute the funding for our cities and our townships and whatever that we do here locally. Let the state levy the taxes and collect those tax payments and distribute, distribute the money for all their state-owned functions, which is what they are. I think that's revolutionary. I've talked to a number of legislators, I've yet to find anybody who thinks it's a bad idea. It's big, but it changes education, it changes the education level and understanding of our taxpayers. So I have two things. I think the one percent sales tax would help us a lot, and the other part of this is change the way we do tax, property tax billing is, is huge. And I think that we ought to make that our legislative priority, and rather than just hear it and forget about it, if you think it's a good idea, let's start the process. It'll take us a year to get this process from discussion to actually something that's being considered by the legislature. And with that, I don't have anything else to say here. I think it's been a great presentation today, or this last two days has been great. I'm very proud of Sedgwick County. I think there are opportunities, but there, the little tiny things we can do are not going to substantially change. It's not going to impress our taxpayers if we, if we cut a million dollars because they're not even going to know what happened. We've got to find big ways to do things differently, if we're going to do them at all. Chairman, thanks for the chance to speak.
That's great. Thank you, Commissioner Howe. Commissioner Meister, would you like to go next?
Do I have five minutes?
Please state your name and address for the record.
Hey, Don Doudret. My feeling on the, the revenue neutral, I don't know how we can ever come close to that, but from that, if we, I, I kind of liked how we did last year. We, we started out capturing the growth and then worked our way back to what eventually was a, nearly a half a mill cut. So my, I would, I would support us approaching the budget season with Mr. Clark's estimates and, and knowing that if we have a chance to, and we could, I guess I could almost be okay with keeping the mill levy the same because we did reduce it last year. Maybe it's a little aggressive to do another reduction or not. I don't, doesn't matter, but I'd like to see, I'd, I'd like to see us start with the base and then, and then work from there. I like a lot of the ideas that Commissioner Howe says, but we're, we'd be moving, we'd be moving state mountains and we're at a county level, but, but we can sure help champion that in legislation. But we got the task at hand right now. So I think that's, seemed like I had something else, but I, I forgot. Okay. If I remember. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Well, I've already mentioned it once, but I'll reiterate, we have to look at other sources of revenue. And we're going to have to, I think, look at the sales tax eventually, or that can help reduce property tax, and if we sell it, it's helping reduce property tax. I think that it's got a chance. In addition, we have talked for years about what we're going to do with flooding in Sedgwick County, and the cost of fixing that is right at a billion dollars last time we heard. So if we had a sales tax, maybe we could dedicate like a tenth of a, of a cent of that towards helping resolve the flooding problem that we've got. We haven't talked about that at all today, but we've talked about it a lot in the past. So we need to, to look at, at what we can do to, for alternate sources of revenue. We talked a lot yesterday about senior centers, and one of the things that we actually, the vote way back when, was to come up with alternate ideas of what to do, but we never came up with an alternate plan. So that's why we're sitting today, just sitting there frozen without an alternate plan. I, I think we need to re-energize that a little bit and find out what's the right thing to do to take care of all seniors over fifty-five. What is the solution? And look at senior services, not just senior centers. What do we have to do to help those out? But again, I, I'm going to always default to the fact that when you give six thousand dollars to senior centers in my district, they're never going to increase, they're never going to improve because they can barely hold their heads above water today. So giving six thousand dollars is just kind of a token saying, well, you're out there, thank you, go away. So I, I would continue to champion my seniors in my district, but I want to champion all seniors throughout Sedgwick County. Everything I try and do is to benefit all of Sedgwick County, not just my district. So, but when I see an inequity, I need to call it out. We talked a little bit about where we need to cut in efficiencies. I think we've got to the point where we've got efficiencies. I, I don't see anything that we're going to do today, tomorrow, or in the next day to help with efficiencies. So I think that that's off the table. We'll get emails from the public constantly, you've got to be more efficient, you, there's, there's a, a lot of things that you could cut in government. That's not a true fact. We know, at least I know from seven years of trying to put together a budget going into the eighth year, that we've, we've met all the efficiencies. They're not left. I would like to hold the line on the mill levy, though. I, I don't want my last year to say that I'm going to put an increase on the mill levy. That's not the way I want to go out. Roads, we talked a little bit about roads yesterday, and I, as I told you yesterday, I don't really agree with moving some of these sales tax over into the general fund. That just puts more effort and pressure on our, our general fund. But we also have to learn to say no. Lynn and I get a phone call every month, or an email from a gentleman out on Thirteenth Street, wants his road paved. We just have to say no. In addition, at least that street is going to be impacted if we can ever get the, the Halloween flood situation solved. Thirteenth Street probably is not going to be the same tomorrow as it is today if we ever get that in. So, but we get calls constantly, at least I do, because I've got such a large district, they want their road paved. We can't continue to, to do that and hold the line on what's going on in public works. I've already mentioned that I'm concerned about public works as far as staffing. I want to make sure that we have the people, if we have a, a huge snowstorm tonight, how are we going to man all of the trucks in order to be able to, to get people to work? We've got, we've done a lot on pay. We've, we've given fifty-nine million dollars, I think you said, in pay raises, but we've still got more work to do. So I'd like to get all those other pay plans. I know that Sheena and her folks are working on it along with the manager, but I, I really believe we need to get the rest of the pay plans put together and kind of settle that. We've been working hard on it, but that kind of, it keeps our focus on that rather than maybe some of the other areas that we need to focus on, so I'd, I'd like to, to solve that. But overall, I, I want to thank the staff, everybody, for all the work that they do, not only as part of the budget preparation, I know it's a huge task, but everything else that happens in Sedgwick County. We get criticized unduly for a lot of things, and I try and make sure that I, I champion what we're doing right. But I, I really feel bad at times because we get people that are throwing stones at us and we can't respond because things are happening that we can't respond to. And I don't know how that we can get past that. Nine-one-one is a prime example. We've got the Wichita Eagle, it's a, prints false narratives from people that don't know what the heck's going on, that think they're exports. And I'm just tired of seeing our great staff that is being criticized unduly. So I want to make sure that our staff knows that I sincerely appreciate everything they do, especially all of our first responders that are out there. They put their life on the line. We, we went through some discussions just recently on, on our, our primary concern, public safety. And we got some criticism, even from the Eagle once again, but that's not unusual. And I, I want to make sure that our public safety officers know that the five of us really do support them, and when we're supporting them, we need feedback, though. They will go and, and run into a burning building, they'll take a bullet for us, they'll do everything, and I appreciate that. But if they think that there's something that is not right, tell us. Don't just say that we'll do it. I, I know they've got a can-do attitude, but if there's an issue, tell us that there's an issue, straight out. Tell us if there's a public safety issue. I think that was kind of lacking in our last, last discussion on public safety out at Lake Afton, is that we really needed public safety to step up and say, we'll do anything you want. I appreciate that, and I love them for it. But if it's something that is not in the best interest of public safety in this county, tell us directly so that we've got the ammunition to stand up. So again, thank you to all our staff, and I know I centered on a few staff, but everybody because, as I said earlier, we can't do without finance, we can't do without, without HR. I'd like to do without Mark Clark's organization once in a while, but I can't.
And the Kyla Clerks.
And the Kyla Clerks. But they're all great, and I appreciate, and I just want them to know, I, I sure, I don't know that I say it enough, how much we appreciate what everyone does. Thank you.
I think my priorities for this year, for next year internally is really just our staff. Is that better? I think our staff is still my priority to make sure that, I mean, we, we can only provide the services that we can provide through our staff, and I think we need to make sure that their compensation and benefits, let them know that they are valued and appreciated, and I know that's what we've been working on, and so just continuing that effort is really important to me. I love the idea of being more preventative in care now that we have been taking compensation and benefits so seriously, and our staffing is so much better. I think it is, it's a great thing to be able to shift instead of just reactionary, being more preventative in, in our public safety care. So that's, I love hearing what's happening so far, but if we can expand on that would be, I think, really important to me to see going forward. Town hall and budget, doing that earlier, I think that's a great idea. And if we can do an education piece to what we do and the funding models that we have, or revenue sources that we have, if we could tie that survey into something like that, like this is the explanation, now tell us what you think after you've heard this, I think that's a great way to introduce a survey. I, I am in agreement to look at, how do we find different revenue sources to pay for government services? I, I have no issue looking at that. I think part of that conversation needs to be addressing the money that, you know, the state requires us to do something, but they have taken away so much money. I think we need to be stronger in our approach to that. We need to try to reclaim some of that because that's, I think you said it was, we were fifty-one percent reliant on property taxes, now we're fifty-five. I mean, and that's a huge piece of that. So I would love to, in our next year, when we work on our platform, to include some of those things, to see how we can get some of that revenue back because we can do sales tax, we can do all these things, but at the end of the day, if the state has caused such an issue, they need to be a part of the solution, in my opinion. So something along those lines, anyway. And I actually really like what Commissioner Howe said about the taxing changes and how we send that out. I would love to look into that further. That's, sounds like a really great idea, and then it helps us explain with the education piece on what our role is versus what the state's doing and everybody else. And so I, I think that would actually be very helpful. Those are probably my priorities going forward. I think education just has to be a really big piece of this because I, I agree that, I just don't know why. I don't know how we could cut any of our services. I just don't see that as logistical. I just, you know, it would be cutting services, everybody has, all the services that we provide are attached to someone, and how do we choose who's more important than others? And I don't know if we can make that decision. So that's kind of my priorities, at least going forward, and I'm excited to think about what county government could look like going forward. If we do the admin building close to City Hall, I think that continues to open up what consolidation efforts could happen between the city and county, and, and having more of that local government campus is, I think, would be a really good help, push in the right direction. So that's where I'll stop. Thank you.
That's very good. Appreciate everybody's feedback and insight. I, I'll start by just saying how much I deeply appreciate the staff, the twenty-seven-hundred, twenty-eight-hundred people that work for Sedgwick County Government. It's unique. I come from a private business world, and so this is different. We have the political side of what we do, but we also have the organizational side, where this is a big organization. It's one of the largest employers in Sedgwick County. So balancing both of those is not always easy, but it's incredibly important, and, and everyone in this organization does something that's important, from aging and IT to elections and all of our public safety departments and forensic science center, I mean, up and down the list. It's, it's challenging, it's important, it's consequential, and what I try to tell people is that you're serving this community by working for Sedgwick County Government. It's not just from an elected role. You, you are, you're, this is public service, you're, and many people are sacrificing to do these things. So I just want everyone in this organization to know how deeply appreciated they are on every single level. I begin to think about John, the mail carrier, and all they, that guy's all over this county man running mail, and he's just, and he's just serving, he's just serving people. And I, I just, my first year here, I have just absolutely adored the people that work for Sedgwick County Government. They are special people, and I, and they need to know that. They absolutely need to know that. So let me talk about short term and long term. Short term is 2025. I have three, I have two priorities in 2025. Number one, it's compensation and staffing stability. We're not done yet. And if we cannot stabilize staffing, then we cannot perform efficient, good government service. And, and our constituents require that, they, they demand that. So we're not done yet with compensation, staffing, stability, and that needs to be, we have to be creative in how we do those things. I appreciate last year incremental increase at twenty-nine million dollars. That's a big number. It's a big, big, big number. But there's more work to be done, and I think we all can acknowledge that. And, and it's not just to give people raises, it's because we're stabilizing staff. Compensation is a part of that equation, and we have to understand that. So that's priority number one. Above all, it's priority number one. Priority number two, which makes this a tough balance, is I will not support a budget that increases the, the property tax mill levy. I, I cannot because we also have to understand that increases, sharp increases in property taxes are hurting people in our community. They are. It, it is. And I understand- They are. It is. And I understand we're only one-fourth of the budget, which is part of the education piece, that we can do a better job. But we can only control the things that we can control, and we can control the one-fourth of the property tax bill that we own. I think it's symbolic in as much as it's practical to hold the line on the property tax mill levy. So I cannot support a budget that will increase the property tax mill levy. That's not saying that I don't see the capacity to grab some of the assessed value growth. Two weeks ago, I might have bluffed you and told you differently, but if we're going to be at four, four and a half percent assessed value growth, I think it's reasonable to talk about how much of that we do grab. So, that conversation, we don't have any numbers to look at what this looks like yet, but I think that we can look at that and see how much of the assessed value growth, I haven't seen a recommended budget yet. So, when we see that, then we'll look and say, "Do we have to grab all four and a half percent of the assessed value growth? Can we grab four?" That's the number, I'm assuming, right? Is that the number?
I do want to clarify, I think, because Mark would like me to clarify. He told us he thinks it will be no lower than four and a half percent for real property. We also have state-assessed utilities and personal property.
Four and a half's the floor.
The floor. And so, but that's just on the real property side. We also have personal property that's out there that continues to play tricks on us because of the commercial machinery.
Yeah, I get it.
Equipment exemption. Plus, we have state-assessed utilities that are beyond the scope of anyone in this room. So we took his information and factored that in with the risks associated with personal property decreasing and the volatility, I think, that we've seen in state-assessed utilities.
Yeah.
And said, "All right, four and a half is going to be our floor."
Four and a half's the floor. Okay, I appreciate that.
I just wanted to clarify, because he does not like us to say that he gives assessments, because he does not.
Oh, thank you, Mark. I'll just say that I'm open to grabbing some of the assessed value growth, particularly if it's directed towards staffing stability and compensation. I'm open to that. I'm absolutely open to that. But I do think that we have to be very specific and very careful, because property taxes are at a threshold in this community, for my district in particular, where people are, they need help, fixed incomes, small business owners, those that are trying to, that are already living paycheck to paycheck with the inflationary environment that we experienced the last few years. So, those are the short-term priorities. How we chalk all this up, we have great staff, a great management staff. I'm excited to dig into that process. But those are the two big priorities for me, is holding the line the best we can on the mill levy rate, and staffing and compensation. Long-term, though, I think that we do have to paint a vision for this community about where we can go. I think we actually get some understanding and relief from our constituents when we talk about, "We're going to grab a little bit of assessed value growth, but here's where we're going. Here's where we think we can get in the future, and this is what we think we can do to reduce the burden of property taxes." I am grateful for the conversation on reducing property tax burden and shifting some of that to sales tax. There's a thirty percent pull factor with sales tax. People outside of our community that are contributing to the things that we do here with sales tax, thirty percent estimated. So, long-term, I think we have to have that conversation. Anything that we deem as not core service, I think we have to have the conversation about functional consolidation, shared services, all throughout this community. That's long-term. Let's look at twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Let's actually have the conversation. Our community demands that conversation and deserves it. I'd love to talk about some things in twenty-six and beyond about how the relationship between courthouse police and sheriff. Seems to me to be some redundancies. Why don't we have the conversation? Not making any significant suggestions, let's just talk about this. Let's talk about parks, wrecks, and art. Let's talk about these things. These are community assets, and not just Wichita and Sedgwick County, but Park City, Mays, Valley Center. Let's involve them in this conversation about how they handle these things. And maybe we can fund these things through sales tax instead of property tax dollars, and everybody that utilizes it can participate in paying for them. Let's talk about Wichita Fire Department and Sedgwick County Fire. Let's have the hard conversation of what that looks like, and that is not an easy conversation. But there are significant redundancies in partnership that we can work with. And we've got to bring some unification to our fire district, or in three or four years, we're going to have a hard time with the finances in our fire district. I think everybody knows that. So let's talk about what that relationship looks like and invite people to the table. Let's actually engage Wichita Fire. Let's come in the room with electeds and have that conversation. Let's talk about community programs. I originally had an idea that community programs, that we can appoint a board, that we actually set a line item budget, I don't know, a million dollars, and we have a board that makes the recommendations. There's an RFP process, because these community programs are important to this community, but they need to be funded via sales tax and not property tax dollars. That's one option, or we just basically say, "We do EcoDevo, Behavioral Health, and we force all these programs in those departments, and we narrow the scope." I'm for both, but I want to have a conversation that began yesterday about community programs. And lastly, EMS and 911, there's ways to modernize the model, and I think long-term, we need to look at that. We've talked about those things a bit today, but that's part of the long-term plan. So, that being said, I, my goal is to modernize local government long-term. One term, it takes me two terms, whatever, but I think that we can do this and do it and paint the vision for this community that they deserve. That's what I want to do. So, but short-term, let's see what we can do in employment compensation. I'm done.
So Commissioners, I think this is an exceptionally helpful conversation. I think we need, I need to do my, the hard part of my job. Sorry. Can you hear me better now? Can you hear me now? I apologize. So the hard part of my job is talking about our current situation, and we have some really good aspirational goals that maybe we can do a sales tax increase. That's going to require legislative approval. We know it's far too late in the session for that to happen for 2026, for 2025, and then we'd have to be prepared to do it for the 2026 budget. But the position we sit in today, if you remember the forecast that Lorian showed you yesterday in this beautiful long sheet, is that we're already in a structural deficit mode. And what you've heard over the last two days are a lot of needs. And while we can increase fees, I think it's helpful to put in context. We didn't just drill down into the details yesterday, but I think it's important to do that. If we look at 2024, the current year we're in, and we remove the investment income that we told you is one-time, we need to treat it as one-time, we're at a five million dollar structural imbalance. Next year, that's to seven million, and that's just the general fund. We're at two and a half million in '26, and then six point nine million for '27 and '28. So, while I am excited at the opportunity to talk about introducing new revenues, increasing fees isn't going to do the trick. It's not going to be the full solution. A sales tax would be wonderful, but it's going to be dependent on voters and whether or not we support that and can get that message out. And so one of the things that I think we need to plan on now, and I am appreciative of the fact that we can't get services, but we also can't continue what we're doing today and continue to maintain these services long-term. And if we get sales tax, depending on how it's structured, on how that needs to be invested, if we're promising property tax relief with the bulk of that, then that still doesn't solve our problem, because we're just trading one for the other. So we do still have some hard decisions in front of us about, maybe it's a two-year solve, but we need to get some of this corrected. We can't continue to just draw down fund balance for operations. Not only is it against policy, but it's just bad financial practice. So, we will bring you the absolute best, most prudent budget we can, but we know, I mean, we've already heard several needs that are going to come to you. We know that there's more that are coming that we haven't even heard about yet. And so I think the understanding that compensation is your priority helps, but then I think it's an expectation for the rest of the organization that new positions or additional things, we're going to have to talk about a balance of that. And I don't see how we solve all of that in a two-year window with just raising fees. So, we don't want to cut, but I don't know any other way to do it if we're going to make, and I love the idea of maintaining a flat mill levy rate. I agree, the idea of increasing property taxes in this community is not something that would go very far. But if we're not going to introduce that as our most stable revenue stream, and you've seen the other modest income that we're expecting to have, the only option we have is to reduce expenses somewhere. And so we're going to have to have that hard conversation over the next few months. And so, I don't want to contradict, but I also don't want everybody to send home thinking, "Oh, there's no cuts, we're spared." We're going to have to have hard conversations.
Yeah. There is a second option. It's reform. We have to reform some of these.
I don't disagree, but reform also...
We can reform local government. We do not have to accept increase-decrease, increase-decrease. There are reform opportunities. We can look at this in a really creative way. There is a second option. There's a second option. It doesn't just have to be cut expense. There's another option that we can look at long-term. And I just think that we have to be creative to look at these things.
Chairman, for the last seven years, I've been trying to get consolidation of fire. We'd reduce our eighteen mills down to twelve, thirteen mills if we had consolidation.
I know.
The fire chiefs are all against it. We had a meeting over at Extension Center, and we had all these people with five, six stripes on their arm telling us that it was the worst idea they ever heard in their life, and they questioned my parentage. We can't even find out what Wichita pays for fire. They've got it in so many different budgets, we'd have no idea. We've been fighting that for seven years. So, I'd love to see us reform something like that. That'd be the easiest place to start, in my opinion.
Would be.
And it turns out, it's the hardest.
It is, and I agree with that. But we're elected to lead, and if we let fire try to determine fire's path for this community alone, without elected leadership, then we're going nowhere. We are elected to lead, and I think that we've got to bring the awareness conversation to this community and have an honest conversation with the community, exactly what Lindsay just said. Here are the options. We raise taxes, or we cut expenses and cut services that people depend on and enjoy as quality of life. Or option B is this, and we let our constituents tell us, "We're employed by them. We're not, I'm not employed by a fire chief. I'm employed by the constituents of Sedgwick County." And we are called to serve our constituents and lay out a vision and a path for this community. And we all can set, I think everybody, I think even you can talk to some fire, we're just using fire as an example. But we can sit here, and everybody will have the same conversation, but when it's time to move this thing forward, everybody plays T-Rex with their arms and says, "Ah, it's too hard." I just think that we got to do this thing. And the best way to do it is build community will, because community will influence political will. And ultimately, this is our decision. And we get in the room with Lily, and we get in the room with those people over there, and we say, "We've got to paint a vision for this community." And we just, and we do, and it may cost some of us our jobs, frankly. But I'd rather not have a job, be able to sleep at night knowing we did the best we could for the best of this community. But we all know the path forward. We all know the path forward. This is the dirtiest secret, is we all know we have to reform in order to cut costs, that we can't, there's nothing else to cut in Sedgwick County Government. And I just say, we put our cards on the table, take it to our community, and let's try to do some political pressure to make this work.
But I think at the same time, we have to realize that we are only one governing agency.
But we are allowed one.
We can control what we can control, and we cannot control the twenty cities that we work with. We can try to get there, but we don't have control over them. So I think setting realistic expectations and timelines, because we're talking about these deficits this year, I mean, next year, that's, reform doesn't happen overnight if you want reform to happen correctly. So let's look at what that looks like, that's more of that long-term or short-term. So how do we get through the next couple of years until we can see some of those things happen? But then, again, at the same time, understand that we're only one governing body, and we can only control ourselves.
I don't disagree with anything you've said, Chairman. The word consolidation is a super sexy word. People love that word. And everybody who runs for this office, that's the first thing, "Do you support consolidation?" The answer's always yes. And I don't think anybody who's ever been in one of these seats has ever said that's a bad idea. But it does require that the other party has to be willing, number one. And right now, also has to be, has to be a legal pathway. And we've, this issue of consolidation of fire is a thirty year whole topic now. I've got books on my shelf, I can show you from decades ago, where this has been discussed. It's not that it's not a good idea, but there are some actual legal barriers to getting there. One of those is debt. Am I wrong about that, Lindsay? So you can't, Wichita has a lot of debt. In fact, they're about to do a number of more, a whole much more fire stations in their plan, two of which I believe are in work right now, and they got more coming, but every one of those stations comes with decades of worth of debt. And that debt cannot be transferred to a different governing body, to a different governing set of electors, if you will, taxpayers. So that becomes a real legal barrier. Second of all, I think they would argue that it would be a tax increase if they were to hand their stuff over to us in some way and keep their debt. They would, operationally, they would, they would believe their argument would be a tax increase for their citizens. That's a non-starter as well. And for our side of the equation, us handing our operations over to the city is a constitutional problem, because the people in the city cannot elect the governing body out for county operations. It's, you know, with mill levy, taxing authority, there's a constitutional problem with the county, with the city being in charge of a county-wide fire. So whether it be a debt barrier or a constitutional barrier, at the end of the day, does anybody out there think we should have less fire stations, less firefighters?
No.
That's where the real savings would come from. But no one wants to even talk about that. To reduce administration within the fire department isn't going to save a huge amount of money. So we talk about fire as an example, but again, we talk about it and talk about it and talk about it. We can never concede those points and move on to the next discussion. Maybe we should, maybe we should consolidate purchasing. They need cars, we need cars. They need fire trucks, we need fire trucks, on the goes. Okay, let's have that, let's have that conversation. You want to go nuts? We need an admin building, right? How about they move their court over to the courthouse and move county into the city hall? That's consolidation. We could use their chambers. I don't know if they want us in that building, by the way. But we could, I'm okay with that idea. I'm not the only one that's brought this up, by the way. But, you know, consolidation, I said is a super sexy word, but it has to be born in the idea there's efficiency and effectiveness and better services to the taxpayer and less cost. And if you don't achieve those goals, then what's the point? And every city out there loves their constitutional home rule. They don't necessarily want to concede to big government. So, at the end of the day, I would say, again, I don't think everything in the county is bad. Everything in the county is not broken. You say, "We should consolidate and we should reform government." I agree, but maybe we've already reformed government. Maybe we're already at a good point. And any changes to that is a change for change purposes. It doesn't necessarily deliver better services to the taxpayer to less cost. Some things actually are pretty good. And so, just, the idea of making change for change sake isn't necessarily going to solve this budget problem.
Yeah. I would agree, and I do agree, many things are great, but we just saw a five point five million dollar structural deficit next year, and then seven million in the years following. The other, the only option is we cut something or we increase taxes. That's the option, right? It might, I mean, I'm not great at math, but we either cut something or we raise taxes. Yes?
We have assessed value growth that's coming at us. We can choose to increase budgets to use that growth.
Correct.
Or we could simply not, hate to use the word, you keep using the word "cut," and I get that. But maybe we should not grow the numbers simply because we have more money coming in. Use the growth to solve the insolvency, structural insolvency, and there's not enough money at that point to add more, fine. The increases may not be there. You can call that a cut. It's a reduction in the increase. But there's an increase coming. If you capture the increase, we don't have an insolvency unless you plan four percent, four and a half percent, five percent growth in salary, for example, or more expensive benefits. We don't, if we don't deal with the issue of benefits, that's a problem. We have to deal with the issue of benefits. I keep bringing this up. Benefits is part of the answer here. So, again, it's a reduction in the increase is what we're talking about here. We actually have the money to not do this, but the plan right now of expanding things to higher numbers is creating the insolvency. Again, that's the plan. So I wouldn't say we're necessarily cutting something to solve this problem. Well, we may not have the money to do that plan.
Yeah.
Right?
No, I, so we'll finish here, and then we, Tom, I think you want to open it up. I think it's healthy for everyone to see this conversation taking place. It's not just healthy for everyone in the room in our organization, but people that will be watching something like this. All I'm saying is, I understand short-term 2025, I understand. I'm saying long-term, let's keep having this conversation. Everyone talks consolidation function, no, I'm not a total consolidation person, I'm a functional, functional areas. You're right. Everyone says it when they first get here, and then everybody stops talking about it because it gets hard. And all I'm saying is, let's just push through the hard. Like there's, let's just push through. Let's push through and let's keep elevating this conversation in a way, and demonstrate the leadership that this community is so desperate for, to paint a vision for this community long-term. Because I'm not, I mean, I have no appetite for raising any more property taxes. I have every bit of appetite to making sure we have the most efficient and productive county government that we have, and those are really hard balances. And the only option moving forward, in my view, from my seat, is we have to reform the way we do some things long-term. So, whatever that looks like, blue ribbon committees, feedback, town halls, let's just, all I'm saying is, from our seat, Sedgwick County Government, let's lead the conversation. all I'm saying is, from our seat, Sedgwick County Government, let's lead the conversation. Let's not be fearful, let's be bold, and let's lead the conversation and figure out what it really looks like. I tell you, I talk about this stuff at every city council when I go visit them, and they say, well, you only talk about these things with the city of Wichita, why don't you include us? I had the same conversation with Park City City Administrator and a Park City City Council member just this week. You're always talking about functional consolidation in Wichita, why don't we have this conversation? Why can't we be in on this too? Because guess what? Our cost of government is going up too. So I'm just saying that there's so much redundancy and I just think, I can't live with myself knowing we're just gonna do the same thing every year, grab a little excess value growth, nominal raises here. I just think there's a bigger, bolder vision that we can paint and I think our people are hungry for it. I know they are. So that's the charge. We'll do 2025, but long-term, let's see if we can figure some stuff out and have some fun with it. Okay.
So we have other electeds in the room. So whoever has the microphones, who has one? Kelly? Commissioner, you can flip around at this point, I think we're back into this dialogue phase now, there's no more PowerPoints.
I guess I'll start. Just wanna thank you for being, for allowing us to be here and be partners with you guys in county government. I'm basically gonna repeat comments that have already been stated. The number one priority for my office and probably for the other electeds is our biggest asset, and that's our people. And to continue to invest in them. There is still fine tuning that needs to be done in each of our offices with our, our employees and compensation and, and positions and grades that they're in. The number two part is to make sure that we continue to have the tools and software that we need to perform our statutory duties. And those are kind of my top two priorities.
I'd probably say the same thing as Kelly. Our employees are the most important asset to the office. But also, I wanna thank all the commissioners for being so supportive of us whenever we have a new idea or an issue and we come to you guys, you are, are super helpful, especially Tom, the county manager. He's always has his door open and if there's something that we need help with, he's very helpful. One of the things that we're excited about in our department is we're, we did an RFP and we have a new records management system. And there is a possibility for us to have more revenue generated and plan on talking to Lindsay and legal about that. So there is possibility. I know like Lindsay said, fees are not what's gonna help, but any little bit that we can do, we wanna be part of that solution, so.
John Waller, I'm with the District Attorney's Office. I'd echo a lot of the same things that we've already heard. We're very appreciative of the adjustments that have been made to the pay plan. We've already seen some differences being made there, particularly in the employees on our general pay plan. But we still have some work to do on our DA pay plan. We've already seen several departures this year of our attorneys and, and so that's a focus that, that we would like to continue working on. I will say, we also have a new records management system, case management system, that was recently approved, that we will be putting in place hopefully later this year. It's our hope that that's gonna increase efficiencies in our office in a number of ways. And so we'll see where that leads, but we're, we're excited about that opportunity and hopefully it will, will lead to some improvements in the office.
Joe Currier with IT, and I do wanna echo a lot of those comments and say thank you for your support and staff is very important to us. We've, we've had recent good successes with retaining our staff as well as filling a lot of the positions that we've had open. And I really appreciate the support with TRB. That allows us to keep everything protected and secure going forward. So, thank you for that.
Nicole Gibbs with Communications. I just wanna add on to the feedback piece. We started last year with the budget simulator going internal with staff and we talked about how staff is our biggest resource and our most important thing in the county government. I think we need to also ask them too where they see opportunities for efficiencies, because since we're in the weeds and in the dirt every day doing the work, we might have some ideas that aren't raised to the top. So just something to think about.
Jeremy Gibbs in the Treasurer's Office, standing in for Brandy. I know she would say a lot of the same things that Kelly just said. A lot of your conversations that you had today, we're already doing in the Treasurer's Office. We're out there educating people on where your tax dollars are going through my taxes that's on the website. We're out into the community doing tag office work in Park City Derby. We're trying to go into other communities. We're trying to think outside of the box and really break that mold of government. So I'm glad to hear that the rest of the counties wanting to do the same thing that we're already doing and we'd love to help.
Bethany with Compensation and Human Resources. And I just thank you commissioners for what you've done with pay for the last years. The success stories that we hear on a regular basis from departments who are able to hire and to keep their employees, it makes us feel good that we're able to be a part of that. Thank you.
Laura Rainwater with Elections. I have to thank all five of you, and I'm sorry, I'm a little hoarse, for being so supportive these last eleven months. It's been a, boy, has it been a growth year for myself. My number one priority this last year was stabilizing the election staff, because it had such high turnover. Getting them fair, equitable pay, as Sheena talked about, internal equity, getting them up to where they need to be. And you guys were so supportive, as was HR, and I just gotta say thank you. Looking forward to a possible move next year, and thank you for that. We need it. We need to all be under one roof with our equipment and we've outgrown our space because of the three added positions and it's gonna be a hot and spicy year with elections. We've got an election here in four weeks. We have three, maybe four special elections, May 7th, and then we have the primary and general. So it's gonna be a busy year, but I just thank you for all the support you've given our department over the last year. It's truly appreciated.
That was a quick note. So, you know, I echo everything that these folks have said as well. Compensation's been an issue for several years. Unfortunately, this commission had to really buckle down and take a look at it and, and it's created very difficult decisions for you and decisions that you're gonna have to make in the future, but we do appreciate it and I can tell you, our personnel appreciate it. Kinda wanna start off with some good news stuff. The, we've talked for years of overcrowding. Our ADP right now is under 1,100 and has been that way for almost five and a half months. We only have one personnel accounting and that's for safety and security reasons. So that's a really good news and we're not seeing the major shifts that we were seeing. If you remember, a little over a year ago, we were at 1,600. So I think there's a lot of different reasons for that. Another piece of good news is, is we're down to only 51 openings in the jail. And that is counting the 13 that graduates here in a couple of weeks and we project a class at the end of February of 16. And so compensation's a piece of it, but I can tell you, there's, there's two other pieces to this. When I first came to the sheriff's office, the way we always done it, attitude and comments I got and told them, that should no longer be in your vocabulary, and then they figured out, a year later, I actually meant it. But when it came to supervision, we've had a difficult time there. So what we've done over the last four or five years is luckily, we've had some retirements because they needed to retire. And we've had a, a, a new crop of supervision. We really spent money to get them quality training on how to treat people and how to supervise in a proper manner. And that's paying off. So we're not seeing as many people leave because they don't like their supervisor. The third piece of that is, is our health and wellness unit. And I'll talk more about that here in a second when we talk about budget. The key piece to that is, we have a therapist. It doesn't cost them $150 for them to come and see him. I can tell you story after story of folks that we would've lost, that they've gone to our therapist and they're still employed here. That's three reasons why I think we're seeing this. So it's not always about the money, there's other things that we had to look at internally to figure out, how do we become a better employer? And the, the health and wellness unit and specifically the therapist has been a huge asset. So when we talk about budget, the promise I'm making the five of you is, there's only one thing I'm asking for. And that is, the ARPA positions that are currently funded have to be retained in the 2025 budget. Thirteen of those positions were allotted because of the expansion of the courts. We currently still have people working overtime, taking people off the streets, taking our warrant section and doing nothing but working inside the courtroom to make sure it's safe, safe and secure. We finally, because of what we've been able to do in hiring practices, the class that just graduated, those were 11 positions to finally fulfill the positions for ARPA that we had to have filled. And so once they graduate FTD, we will be transferring 11 deputies up to judicial and then all the other stuff should end. We also have to add a supervisor for that ratio. So that's 12 of those positions. The other positions that we'll be asking for, we made a change in our core area in the jail to a civilian employee that, you know, it, it, it does cost less and basically they're the ones calling down the inmates for court, getting them put into the holding cells so the deputies in judicial can come down and get them. We also had to, because of Odyssey and some other stuff, we had to add a warrant position because the state system isn't going to work, I'll just be real honest with you, the way it should, we, we need it to work. And so those are the thing, that's the only thing we're gonna be asking for. Yes, is there a three percent increase in food? Yes, is there a three percent increase in, in medical costs? Yes. Those are built into the contracts. When we talk about two other pieces that I, that I do think is important, legislation, legislation, legislation is extremely important. Not only from a county perspective, but also from a sheriff's office perspective. There's going to be a bill that's getting ready to drop, actually two, which is medical marijuana. I will not get on my soapbox here and tell you that that's an oxymoron, because there's no such thing as medical marijuana. But we have some local folks here that are big, big, big on getting that passed, because they own it already. They're already in the hemp industry, this is where they want to make their money off of. The problem is, is if you look at folks or states that passed medical marijuana, what they look like now? Portland, Oregon, Seattle, Washington, Denver, Colorado, San Francisco, do we want our community looking like that? Because they also legalized and that's usually what comes from that. And when we talk about the issues that we already have here with our drug culture here, fentanyl is being mixed in everything, including marijuana. Marijuana, back in the day, was maybe three to 12% potency levels. Minimum now is 30%. You're seeing the articles now and what Commissioner Beatty talked about, the psychosis. It's happening. There's actually studies now that are, are taking place on the potency level of this marijuana that is now produced. And remember, a lot of it's 90%. They don't even know what that's gonna cause yet. They're starting to figure it out. And so that legislation's gonna drop, we're dead set against it in, in the associations, because we see what comes with it. Oklahoma's a disaster. Just look up anything that's going on in Oklahoma. And when you talk about the Chinese taking over this country, they did on that, those grow operations. And so, and all the problems related with that. And so much so that Oklahoma decided, we don't want legislation for recreational and they shot it down. They're one of the few states that have done it. And so that's a big one that we need to pay attention to, because it will increase our homeless population and it will increase our gelling population and the services will be overloaded, because that's what all these other cities have seen. The next thing is, and I know this one's a very sticky one, is Medicaid expansion. That bill's getting ready to drop as well. And I understand the political aspects of it. I'm speaking to it only as running the jail, because two years ago, we supported the legislation to expand it in the jail. And just to give you a brief story, the individual that passed away here recently, his hospital stay, we just got the bill on it, was 632,000. We get the Medicaid rate, which is 62,000, which if Medicaid expansion takes place, it's zero. That's just one story. We've been paying one individual's monthly cost for his medication and everything else that goes through 19,000 a month. And that's not at a Medicaid rate, because it doesn't qualify. And so those are issues that sometimes, you know, me as a, as a sheriff and, and, that I have to venture into, because I'm also a good steward of taxpayer money. And this is one of those issues that, that we have to take a look at. And sometimes it goes against the grain of, of the majority of the legislation, but in the end, I'm elected to make sure that we are judiciously using taxpayer money in the best way possible. And Medicaid expansion in the jails is the way to do that. So, thank you for the time.
Echo the comments, everybody else with the support of the commission. The area that I'm currently over in the sheriff's office includes recruitment and we've seen a huge increase in our numbers and our classes and our retention, some of the things the sheriff talked about, our wellness unit, our therapist, that's obviously helping a lot. And my only other comment is, I'm moving into a new position, but I've worked with a lot of county staff, Lindsay, Lauren, Bethany, Nicole, Michelle, they have been so helpful. And I say it all the time to people about how great a staff we have at the county and how it's gonna make my transition so much easier to my new position and learning it and how it'd be an absolute nightmare, nightmare without their support. So I appreciate all you guys and really, we have a great crew, so thank you.
Well, the most hated guy in, in, you know, Sedgwick County, needs two microphones. So, thank you very much for your service, commissioners, it's greatly appreciated. And for Tom and for Lindsay and Lauren, thank you. Thank you to everybody here. Bottom line is, thank you for the adjustments to the manning table and the compensation, it's made a difference. There's still some adjustments that we'd like made, but we know that looking at the budget, we're gonna have to be careful for what we asked for, and we will, but there will be some ask. I can tell you that when it comes to legislation, it looks like those wonderful people in Topeka, and there are some wonderful people in Topeka, and it looks like they haven't hurt us yet. They are talking, I went to the legislative reception, I spent lots of time with legislators. And, you know, everybody's scared of the values being capped. And most of the people I talked to, they wanted my honest opinion and I shared it with them. Most of them did not want to cap values. I mentioned Senator Tyson, she didn't come to our legislative reception, but every senator that I talked to, they just rolled their eyes. It was, it was rather interesting. So even two or three senators said, we wanna hurry up and get into the coffee shops, it's an election year, we wanna go kiss babies and shake hands. And so hopefully the county doesn't get hurt. And once again, thank you. Next week, you'll be hearing plenty from me. And after that, if you have any questions or... So, even two or three senators said, "We want to hurry up and get into the coffee shops. It's an election year. We want to go kiss babies and shake hands." And so, hopefully, the county doesn't get hurt. And once again, thank you. Next week, you'll be hearing plenty from me, and after that, if you have any questions or constituents that need assistance, just let me know. Thank you.
You don't need to.
I don't want to. I only want one. I'm going to echo a lot of the comments of saying thank you and stuff for your support of all the offices and all the employees in the county. I'm actually going to bring up one of Commissioner Howell's ideas about split tax bills. I've got property in the state of Texas. I get four tax bills. I get one from the school district. I get one from the emergency services district. I get one from the county, and I get one from the college district. So, in Texas, emergency services is 911, fire, EMS, sheriff, PD. All that's through the emergency services district. They levy their own tax. So, I get four tax bills. So, I know who I need to go yell at if I don't like my taxes. So, I support your idea.
I have a lot that I can say, but I want to be employed after this meeting.
Well, I said a lot earlier about compensation, but just from the HR perspective, what we do is support all of the departments. We have a great staff. Compensation, Bethany and Anna, who's not here today, spend a lot of time working with these departments, and we realize things, you know, they're evolving. It's fluid. We're working with them all the time, but we thank you for keeping the momentum there, for listening to some of our ideas of moving things forward. We know it's a lot. We also know that we have to keep everyone in mind when we make these recommendations. I'll also add, you know, I, I talked about it earlier, but recruitment is really big and something that we've been able to dedicate a staff member to, and that person has also been a point contact for every department here. So, a lot of what we ask for in the budget is supporting 42 other departments as well. So, thank you.
I've had my shot at you too, but I, you've got hundreds and hundreds of employees that are out there passionately helping thousands and thousands of your constituents, and so, thanks for the support that you give them because they are really the key to this whole thing.
Thank you. Justin Waggoner, County Counselor, first. I wanted to commend all five of you for having creative ideas during this and also taking on some ideas and challenges that you have in mind. I also couldn't help but see a lot of legal questions that we'll be fielding in the next few weeks and months on this, and that's okay. That's, that's what we're here for. Really, for our office, probably the biggest concern, if I do a SWOT analysis of our office, the biggest threat I see is losing attorneys. So, I probably will intend to ask for increased compensation to put us closer on par with our peers in order to keep providing legal service to all of you in the county departments. Thank you.
Well, you've heard from me over the last two days. I think you've got an idea of what my priorities are, but I do want to take the opportunity to thank you for, as a board, what you've done to support the employees. I know we talked about how I'm 30% short out in the field, but we are making strides. We're making improvements thanks, you know, to finance and HR. We work with them constantly every day. We work with many departments, Justin and his lawyers. We are constantly working with everybody, and we get to do the things we do because of their support and what they do for us. So, I just wanted to thank everyone. I think, you know, Tim kind of hit it, the nail on the head. We have the majority, I think the majority of the employees here, I know the majority of the Public Works employees, appreciate what's been done on behalf of them, what's continuing to be done. It's helped us retain those employees and maintain a strong workforce. So, thank you.
I appreciate the feedback yesterday when we talked about community funding and as we codify a, an approach to, to looking at that. I would echo the, the comments that everybody has said about this support that the commission provided in terms of compensation. Just speaking anecdotally, for the finance division, I know that it's made a big difference in our ability to retrain, retain and attract employees, but in addition to that, the holistic support for the county culture helps us support you and, and be proud to represent Sedgwick County.
Just, just real quick, oh, I'm sorry, Pete, go ahead. I just wanted to, to thank Kevin. Nicole is here yet. Elizabeth is here yet, and the big boss is gone. She had to go down and do some work on the psych hospital, but thank them for setting this up, rescaring this facility, providing the food, the labor to do that. I just want to thank, and I think we should clap for them, so.
Well, I appreciate, it's been a long couple of days, but very productive couple of days. This is an important process. I think the most important thing we do is the budget formation on our end here. I want to appreciate all the comments and, and feedback from, from staff. I think it's very helpful in many regards, and I think everybody realizes there's more work to be done, but we've, this commission, previous commissions started some of this work, and, and there's more work to be done, and we'll see to it that we continue to make this a great organization that serves this community. So, it's Friday. We don't have a, any agenda review or anything, right? No? That's it? Okay. Everybody get to go home now? Okay, well. And again, Lindsay, happy birthday. Yeah. So, thank you, everybody, for taking part in this process, and have a good day, have a good weekend.